Gentlemen, it is 3:01 in the afternoon. I'd like to call the City Commission to order. It is my honor and privilege to introduce Pastor Mario Solari of the Mosaic Church, who will be providing the invocation. Thank you so much. Ladies and gentlemen, if you'll please rise and join us.
Let us pray. Our Father, which art in heaven, holy is your name. As we look around our beautiful city, we realize that there are many and great things around us. Lord, we are more successful when we humble ourselves before you and each other. No one stands before the Grand Canyon or looks up at the Red Tree Forest or flies over the Everglades and says to themselves, "I am great." Sovereign Lord, you have made the heavens and the earth by your great power and outstretched arm. Nothing is too hard for you. Lord, we ask you to bless those who have been adversely affected by this pandemic. May the kindness of strangers and goodness of all citizens quickly restore our city to wholeness and holiness. Bless the members of the City Council. May those who serve in this body continue to do so with honor, patience, and genuine care for all members. Lord, give them wisdom, give them joy in their office, and give them a feeling of gratitude that they have served our city well. Lord, I finish our prayer with Psalms 121. "I lift up my eyes to the mountains; where does my help come from? My help comes from the Lord, the Maker of heaven and earth." We ask all this in your holy name through your Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Ladies and gentlemen, if you will please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pastor, thank you so much for joining us. Certainly do appreciate it. Ladies and gentlemen, it is a beautiful day in Tallahassee. We have a full agenda, lots to discuss today. As always, I want to encourage everyone to join me and set the tone, making sure that we have a strong civil meeting and showing the rest of the world how to do it right. Having said that, I failed myself and I failed you at the last meeting with a bad night. I made a mistake. Once again, Commissioner Porter, I apologize for cutting you off. I appreciate you taking my phone call and I enjoyed our conversation. Thank you very much. Committed to having a great meeting tonight. With that, Mr. Manager, any modifications to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The materials for item 1102 were added to your meeting packet. We've also updated the attachment, the 502, the Presentation of Proclamation Recognizing Public Power, Public Natural Gas, and Customer Service Weeks. Item 13.06 has been deleted and will be rescheduled for a later meeting. And finally, there was an addition of an item 1103 for approval to accept donation of artwork that is in your City Commission section. And those are all the modifications.
All right. Any questions on the modifications? Sounds great. We're going to go straight into the presentations. Ladies and gentlemen, we have two fantastic presentations for this evening. First and foremost, I would like to ask President Michelle Ridge to come, or, I'm sorry. Michelle, come join us. Madam President, come join us. Isha, come join us. Any other members of the Paralegal Association come join us. Got it all confused. But Madam President, I'll be turning it over to you, of course, at the end. It is my honor and privilege. We've been doing this how many years now? Second year of doing it. The first year in chambers, though. Absolutely. So it's my honor and privilege, from the governing body of the City of Tallahassee, a proclamation. Whereas in 1985, the Tallahassee Association of Legal Assistance was formed and later became a chapter of the Paralegal Association of Florida Incorporated. And whereas the practice of law is challenging and complex, and whereas attorneys require the services of knowledgeable professionals who are committed to fulfilling the duties of a paralegal, and whereas paralegals provide invaluable services to attorneys, governmental entities, and private corporations throughout Florida, and whereas paralegals work to maintain integrity and a high degree of competence throughout the legal profession while striving for professional enhancement through education, and whereas paralegals are educated and trained with a thorough knowledge of legal concepts and facts and are experienced professionals with expertise in all critical aspects of successful and efficient law practices, and whereas the value of talented paralegals should be recognized for their great service to Floridians, now therefore, I, John Daly, by the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Tallahassee, do hereby recognize October 18th through the 22nd as Paralegal Week and October 23rd as Paralegal Day, read into the record and witness of each and every one of you dated today, October 13th, 2021. Madam President, my honor, present you with this proclamation. Yes, and the microphone is yours.
Thank you very much. On behalf of all the paralegals here in the City of Tallahassee, as well as the paralegals who are a member of the Big Ben Chapter, we appreciate this proclamation and the acknowledgement that we've received. Thank you.
Excellent. That's how we get a picture. Here she comes. All right. Tony, where's Tony? Come on up here, Donnie. Come join me. Is James here, too? James, come on up. James, come on up. Tony Gillian and James Barnes are fearless leaders at the utility. Tony is our General Manager of Electric and Gas Utility. James, as you know, is our Chief Customer Officer and Customer Operations. I want to ask everybody, yes, everybody in the family to come on up. We are so proud of our utilities, the great men and women, the number-one public utility in the nation. And I have a presentation and a proclamation to present. From the governing body of the City of Tallahassee, a proclamation. Whereas the City of Tallahassee's mission is to be the national leader in the delivery of public service, including providing utility services consisting of electric, gas, water, wastewater, solid water, and stormwater, and whereas the city is a proud public power provider dedicated to supporting the high quality of life in our community, and whereas the city's electric utility, established in 1902, is the 27th-largest municipal electric utility in the nation and is an industry leader known for being at the forefront of technology and innovation, and whereas the city safely provides natural gas energy through 960 miles of underground gas mains and serves more than 34,000 customers in Leon, Gaston, and Waculla areas, and whereas the city's shift from fuel oil to natural gas to generate electricity helped reduce the community's carbon footprint, and whereas now the city has begun shifting from natural gas to solar, further reducing our greenhouse gas emissions, and whereas citizens have come to expect reliable, exceptional customer service from city employees, the people behind the power, who value the power of service with every interaction, and whereas it takes a highly skilled and dedicated workforce to achieve success, ensure the integrity and dependability of our distribution systems, and assist customers with energy conservation and cost savings, which is why during October each year, we celebrate Public Power, Public Natural Gas, and Customer Service Weeks. Now therefore, I, John Daly, by the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Tallahassee, do hereby recognize the City of Tallahassee Utilities as the most valuable and vital community asset that contributes to the well-being of local citizens throughout energy, efficiency, customer service, and environmental protection, and witness and read into the record in front of each and every one of you here today. Signed, John Daly, dated October 13th, 2021. Tony, it's my honor to present this to you on behalf of the Commission. Thank you, each and every one of you, for everything that you all do for the City of Tallahassee.
Commissioners, Mayor, on behalf of our entire staff, I'd like to thank you for this recognition. And also personally, I want to say how happy I am to be part, how happy and proud I am to be part of this team. So thank you again very much.
Absolutely. And again, thank each and every one of you for such a fine job. Really do. I've invited my colleagues to come down. If we could try to get some type of a picture, Allison, I'll let you.
Absolutely.
Everybody be close. Come on over. Ladies, come on over. Thank you all so much. Thank you all. Thank you, thank you, thank you. You doing all right?
Yeah.
All right. Mr. Manager, do we have any announcements come before the City Commission?
No, sir.
Do we have any appearances by City Commission-appointed boards, committees, or other governmental entities?
No, sir.
Mr. Clark, citizens to be heard on agendted items.
Yes, sir, Mayor. Tonight, we do have some speakers. We will take our speakers at the time of each agenda item. They've each signed up for a particular item or items, and we'll take them at that time. We do have in-person and virtual speakers tonight, three virtually, I think, each on a different item. So we will take the individuals in person and then the individuals on the line. And so at this time, you may proceed to the meeting. And I'll just let anybody else who has not filled out a card that would like to, there's a table just outside that you can sign up to speak.
Sounds good. We are on the consent agenda. Is there any public comment on consent?
There is not.
All right. Mr. Manager, have any items been pulled off consent?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Move consent, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Curtis Richardson. You made the motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Seconded by Commissioner Porter. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously. We are on item number 11.01. Mr. Manager.
The Treasurer Clerk will introduce this item.
Excuse me. Treasurer Clerk.
Mayor, I'll take that. Yes, sir. This is an item for the Joint City-County Bicycling Work Group. This agenda item recommends Alexander Harden as a city appointee to that joint body.
Excellent. Do we have any public comment on this item, Mr. Clark?
No, sir.
All right. Colleagues. Move acceptance.
Second.
Been properly moved by Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox for acceptance, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further comment on this item? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. 11.02. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, sir. This seeks the acceptance of the Commission for the 2021 Tallahassee-Leon County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls Annual Report. It recommends Option 1 and 2, which also includes the approval of the Agreement for Staffing for the Tallahassee-Leon County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls with Leon County and Oasis Center for Women and Girls Administrative Support.
Excellent. Do we have any public speakers on this item?
I believe we do have a presentation scheduled for Ms. Gordon.
Excellent.
I'm not sure. I saw Ms. Gordon. I see her there now. Ms. Gordon.
Thank you so much for joining us.
As she comes forward, Mayor, we do not have citizen speakers on this item.
Excellent.
So, good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for having us here today. I'm LaShawn Gordon. I had the privilege of being the 2021 Chair for the CSWG. Our new Chair, Carrie Boyd, is here, along with our CSWG coordinator. Mayor is back there as well. So we have just a short PowerPoint presentation, so we'll go ahead and get started if we can go to the next slide. So last year, we made 2020, 2021, the Year of the Girl, and it was very, very exciting in the intersectionality of race, class, health, and human capital in the lives of girls in Tallahassee and Leon County. A lot of you all I work with through my day job, which is United Partners of Human Services. So some of the findings that we had, I think you all will find very, very interesting, and that was 12% of the girls felt unsafe in their neighborhoods, 24% of the girls felt unsafe in their schools, 67.6% of the girls experienced verbal bullying, 32.7% of the girls experienced cyberbullying, 28.9% of the girls experienced physical bullying, and then 20 out of 612 incidents listed in the Leon County School District Safety and Incident Report were related to sexual offenses. Florida ranks second for the highest number of cybercrime victims. Florida's ranked number three in reported human trafficking cases. 54 female youth were arrested for aggravated assault in 2020, and 20% of girls experienced major symptoms of depression. So what are we recommending? So for our recommendations, we actually have four wonderful committees. And our Education and Economic Security Committee, we recommend that the city and the county partner with the Tax Collectors Mobile Unit and community sponsors to offer free Florida IDs to women and girls in our area. As we know, that can be a huge barrier for unemployment, getting in college or trade school, or just moving about the city when you don't have an ID. Our Girls Committee recommended that the city and the county should implement more gender-responsive programs that address the unique needs of girls in our area. We all know that girls' needs are very unique. Our Health and Development Committee recommended that the city and the county should increase the availability of strength-based, mental, and sexual health programs for families and community centers. And then lastly, but certainly not least, Violence and Safety recommended that the city and the county should increase efforts to obtain substantive data relating to LBGTQ plus women and girls and identify services and resources needed within the community. Do we have any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Porter.
Hi. I just have a quick question. I look forward to talking more with you all about this at another time after the meeting. I was wondering if you could give an example of what you mean by gender-responsive programs?
Absolutely. So gender-responsive programs are programs that is specifically related to whatever gender you're talking about. In this case, we're talking about girls. So it has to do with the way girls are taught, what the building looks like, what the staff look like, the paint colors on the wall, but everything is centered around the focus of the girls.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right.
Any other questions?
Any other questions on the presentation? Let's go Commissioner Williams-Cox and then Commissioner Richardson.
This is not a question, this is a comment. Thank you all for the work that you're doing. I know that you were scheduled to do a summit with girls, and I'm hoping that going forward, as we come out of this pandemic, we're able to do that, because I think it is very important. I think you all hit on some very key issues in dealing with our young ladies, and being able to bring them together to celebrate them as well as listen to them, I think is going to be very important. So I hope that going forward, we will revisit the Girl Summit. And if I had a question, a question would be, is there any year that's never the year of the girl? Because, you know, I've been a girl all my life. And every year is my year. So I'm hoping that every year is going to be the year of the girl. And we do, based on what you've shown us here and based on what we know, we have a lot of work to do. And we just need to dig down and get it done. And thank you for your leadership this year, and we're looking forward to continuing to work with Ms. Boyd and the rest of your committee. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. We appreciate all your support.
Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think Commissioner Williams-Cox stole all my thunder.
You're not a girl, are you?
I'm an honorary sister-girl, y'all.
That's right.
But I, too, want to thank you all for the work that you have done. LaShawn, you've provided excellent leadership for the Commission. I am ecstatic to be the City Commission's liaison to the Commission, and certainly look forward to working with you all under the guidance of your new leader in the future. The girls and women are experiencing some unique needs these days, and it is important that we address those needs. And I'm the father of two beautiful daughters, and so I look forward to doing everything that we can to let young girls and women know how much we value them in this community and are committed to providing the resources that they need in order to thrive and be successful. So we look forward to working with you all in the months and years to come. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. We appreciate your support.
Excellent. Excellent. Mayor, pretend.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'll just echo what my colleagues have already stated. Thank you for all the work and for the recommendations, and, you know, I look forward to continued partnership to see what we can achieve together. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Sean, you have done a tremendous job. I can only imagine the hurdles that you all have faced during the global pandemic for the past 18 months. And you've done an amazing job. You really have. I am very proud that as a county commissioner, I was part of the body that created the Commission on the Status of Women and Girls and have supported it every year since, and today is no different. Reporting the recommended action on the table. Keep up the great work.
Thank you. We appreciate you.
Absolutely. We do need a motion on the table. Commissioner Williams-Cox.
I move acceptance of the committee's report.
Excellent. Been properly moved by Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox, seconded by Commissioner Porter. Any further comment?
Does that include Option 2 for the $20,000 funding?
Yes.
Okay.
Option 1 and Option 2, the recommended action. Seeing no further comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. Ladies and gentlemen, our next item is a very special item. I'm going to turn it over to the City Manager for his team to introduce.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me ask our Director of Environmental Services and Facilities, John Powell, to come forward to introduce this. And as I mentioned earlier, this was added to your agenda, and we're seeking your approval to accept a donation from a very, very prominent local artist, Ron Yerbedra. His signature artwork entitled "Rainforest," as you came in the City Commission, the City Hall today, it's hanging on the wall. It's a beautiful piece. You can see the picture of it. And this process is required to accept the donation. I'd like to recognize Amanda Kerri Thompson. She does a fantastic job for us and so many in the community as part of COCA. We really appreciate her. She's here tonight. And especially Mr. Yerbedra's family, Kent. His brother is here with his wife from Mobile, Alabama.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Mayor, and Commissioners. Mr. Ron Yerbedra is a professor emeritus of art education at FAMU, founding, our former director of the Lemoine Center for the Arts, founding member of the Mary Brogan Museum, and as the City Manager mentioned, well-known local artist who operated an art studio in Railroad Square for more than 40 years. In addition to exhibiting hundreds of pieces of his own art, including here in City Hall, he also mentored countless other artists, helping them exhibit their art, helping them find their creative voice. Mr. Yerbedra has graciously offered to donate one of his signature paintings, as you see on the screen, to the City of Tallahassee. This piece entitled "Rainforest" is a six-foot by eight-foot painting, as you can see, with his trademark palm trees and gold leaf. This piece has greeted thousands of friends, fans, patrons, and admirers at his Railroad Square studio for many years. If accepted tonight, it will greet visitors to City Hall for years to come. Acceptance of this painting would be a welcome addition to the city's permanent art collection. And acceptance is recommended by the Council on Culture and Arts, who manages and implements the Art in Public Places program. It is also consistent with the Commission's art donation and acceptance policy. As such, this item requests approval to accept this donation of art into the city's permanent collection. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clark, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Let's get into public comment first. I mean, let's get into Commissioner discussion. Anybody care to? I know you've all seen the piece, and it's absolutely phenomenal. Any further comments? Well, I will tell you that I had the opportunity to go by yesterday and visit with the professor, personally thanked him. And I know that Ron is watching on TV right now, and he has left such an incredible mark on Tallahassee art community. And the fact that we now have this amazing piece, "Rainforest," hanging right here in City Hall, right by the front door, I know I am proud. I know you are proud to have this amazing piece of work that is here. I do want to personally welcome Kent and Cindy that have driven over from Mobile to be with us here today. Of course, would love to give you the opportunity to speak if you would like to on behalf of your brother. If not, that is perfectly fine as well. But please, Mr. Yerbedra, we'd love to have you.
First of all, we'd like to thank the Mayor and the County Commissioners for this opportunity. We're very honored and proud to represent my brother, which unfortunately is ill and can't be present today, but we graciously, the Yerbedra family graciously accepts the donation that he is giving the City Council here, the County of Tallahassee, and appreciate all. He loved the City of Tallahassee. Of course, was a professor for 30-something years at Florida A&amp;M University, and I hope that everybody gets a chance to review his painting. He's well-known and famous for the gold leaf palms of Florida, so please take the time to look at that. And there again, we are very honored and thank the Commission for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So let's go ahead and go through the motions. The recommended action is obviously Option Number 1, to accept.
So moved.
Been properly moved by Commissioner Porter. I am going to ask that we have a unanimous second, and all those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it passes unanimously. On behalf of the City Commission, City of Tallahassee, we graciously accept. Thank you very much. Professor, I know you are watching on TV. Thank you, thank you, thank you. We are now on the introduction of ordinances. We are on 12.01. Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 12.01, Introduction of Ordinance Number 21-0-26, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, amending Section 6 of the Charter of the City of Tallahassee, annexed within the corporate area of the City of Tallahassee, Florida. Upon adoption of said ordinance, property being situated in Leon County, Florida, near the intersection of Bannerman Road and Sable Chase Drive, in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of Section 171.044 Florida statutes, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, and providing an effective date. The recommended action is Option 1, Introduce Ordinance Number 21-0-26 and Set the First and Only Public Hearing for December 8, 2021, at 5:00 p.m. in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall.
Mr. Clark, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
The Madam Attorney has stated the recommended action is Option Number 1.
So moved.
Been properly moved by Commissioner Porter?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. Item number 12.02. Madam Attorney.
Thank you. Item number 12.02 is Introduction of Ordinance Number 21-0-32, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, City Commission, amending Chapter 21, Article 11 of the Code of General Ordinances of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, by deleting Section 21-492 entitled Burning Permits, amending Chapter 10, Article 1 of the Code of General Ordinances of the City of Tallahassee, order to create Section 10-2 entitled Burn Permits, providing for conflicts, separability, and an effective date. Recommended action is Option 1, Introduce Ordinance Number 21-0-32 and Set the First and Only Public Hearing for October 27, 2021, at 5:00 p.m. in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall. There are no speakers on this item.
Thank you. No speakers on this item. Let's open it up for Commission discussion.
Move staff recommendations, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Commissioner Richardson has moved staff recommendation of Option Number 1, seconded by Commissioner Porter. Seeing no further comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. Item number 12.03. Madam Attorney.
Thank you. Item number 12.03 is Introduction of Ordinance Number 21-Z-25, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, designated and including additional territory located on 9.14 acres at 5701 and 5723 Thomasville Road, as in Tallahassee Residential Preservation 2, RP2. Two, RP2, from Leon County Residential Preservation RP on the official zoning map of the city of Tallahassee, adopted and established by the city commission. Providing for conflicts, severability, and an effective date, recommended action is option one, introduce ordinance 21-Z-25 and set the first and only public hearing for October 27, 2021, at 5:00 p.m. in the city of Tallahassee City Commission chambers at City Hall.
Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment?
No, sir.
All right, colleagues, let's open it up for discussion and motions.
Move staff.
Commissioner Richardson?
Move staff recommendations.
Okay. Properly moved by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Commissioner Porter for staff recommendation of option number one. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five zero. We are on item number 12.04. Madam Attorney.
Item number 12.04 is introduction of ordinance number 21-Z-27, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, amending the English property plan unit development on the official zoning map of the city of Tallahassee, located on 744 acres on both sides of Blairstone Road, generally south of Orange Avenue, north of Tram Road, east of Rickards High School, and west of Capital Circle, southeast on the official zoning map of the city of Tallahassee, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Recommended action is option one, introduce ordinance number 21-Z-27 and set the first and only public hearing for November 10, 2021, at 5:00 p.m. in the city of Tallahassee City Commission chambers at City Hall.
Excellent. Mr. Clerk, do we have any speakers on this item?
No, sir.
Colleagues, let's open it up for direction and comments.
Move acceptance of option number one.
Been properly moved by Commissioner Diane Williams Cox for option number one.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Porter. She beatstewit. Commissioner Richardson, any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five zero. We're on item number 12.05. Madam Attorney.
Item number 12.05, introduction of ordinance number 21-Z-28, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, amending the Southwood Plan Unit Development on the official zoning map of the city of Tallahassee, project site located on 3.4 acres on the southeast corner of the intersection of Artemis Way and Tram Road, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Recommended action is option one, introduce ordinance number 21-Z-28 and set the first and only public hearing for November 10, 2021, at 5:00 p.m. in the city of Tallahassee City Commission chambers at City Hall.
Excellent. Do we have any public comment, Mr. Clerk?
No, sir.
All right, colleagues, direction and comments.
Move acceptance of option one.
Commissioner Diane Williams Cox has moved acceptance of option number one. Staff recommendation is there, second to the motion.
Second.
Been seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five zero. Item number 12.06, Madam Attorney.
Item number 12.06, introduction of ordinance number 21-Z-31, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, designating and including additional territory located on 14.92 acres and located 180 feet south of the intersection of Piney Zee Plantation Drive and Planters Ridge Drive, as an in the city of Tallahassee, single-family attached, detached, and two-family residential R3 from Superior Residence Plan Unit Development, PUD, on the official zoning map of the city of Tallahassee, adopted and established by the city commission. Providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date, recommended action is option one, introduce ordinance 21-Z-31 and set the first and only public hearing for November 10, 2021, at 5:00 p.m. in the city of Tallahassee City Commission chambers at City Hall.
Excellent. Mr. Clerk, do we have any comments on this item?
No, sir.
Excellent. Colleagues, direction and comments.
Move staff recommendation.
Commissioner Porter, move staff recommendation. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Been seconded by Commissioner Diane Williams Cox. Seeing no further comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five zero. We are on policy formation and direction, 13.01. Mr. Manager.
Mr. Mayor, the city attorney will introduce.
I'm sorry. Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 13.01 is consideration of the legal challenge to HB1. At the September 8, 2021, City Commission meeting, the City Commission directed the city attorney to bring back an agenda item that generally discussed the litigation which the city of Gainesville Council approved filing in the courts of Florida and which challenges the state constitutionality of HB1. A particular concern to the Tallahassee City Commission was the provisions which purport to give the governor through the Administration Commission the authority to alter the budgets of local governments should they reduce their law enforcement budgets. This agenda item presents the legal arguments contained in the draft complaint approved on August 5, 2021, by the city of Gainesville City Commission. Legal representatives of the nonprofit organizations, Public Rights Project, Community Justice Project, and Southern Poverty Law Center, and the private law firm of Jenner and Block, requesting that the city enter the litigation challenging HB1 as a plaintiff, are available on Webex to briefly explain the legal claims available to the city, the status of any litigation, the specification of any cost or expense to the city, and other cities to date who have agreed to participate in the legal HB1 challenge. Four options are provided for your consideration. The first option is to take no action to join in the proposed HB litigation and direct the city attorney to continue to monitor the implementation of section one of HB1 and report back to the mayor and the city commissioners. Option two is to approve resolution number 21-R-32, authorizing the filing of a lawsuit challenging HB1. And number three, direct the city attorney to enter into a professional services agreement with the attorneys engaged by the nonprofits to represent the city of Tallahassee on a pro bono basis as to attorney's fees and legal costs. The fourth option is, of course, and always, commission direction. It is my understanding that the representatives are available on Webex to summarize what I briefly stated. So I see Mr. John Miller, who is present as well as...
Thank you, Madam City Attorney.
...who is representing the Public Rights Project for Beth Foster, the Community Justice Project, and Paul Chavez, the Southern Poverty Law Center.
Good evening, commission, or afternoon.
Would you like for them to proceed?
Please, that'd be great.
Mr. Miller?
Well, thank you so much for that introduction, Madam City Attorney. We really appreciate the opportunity to be here before the commission this afternoon, and we're here to share with you our plans to challenge the recently passed Florida House Bill One, and why we, in a growing coalition of cities, find HB1 to be so problematic, and why it's crucial, we believe, for the city to take action as part of that coalition. As the city attorney mentioned, my name is Jonathan Miller. I'm the legal director of Public Rights Project. I'm joined by my colleagues, who you'll hear from in a moment, who are part of our litigation team, a team that we've assembled to represent cities pro bono without cost to the cities involved in litigation. And we'll be challenging HB1 because it directly threatens the ability of local governments to structure budgets that best meet the needs, values, and priorities of their constituents. Here's what HB1 does. It authorizes certain elected officials... If the city makes any reduction to the operating budget with respect to law enforcement. And there are many ways that this can happen, including if a city fails to maintain any increase from a following year, or if there might be a transfer of funds. There could also be a situation where a city expends a certain amount of money for a particular contract or a particular purchase of body cameras or equipment that it doesn't seek to maintain. And as a result of HB1, the city could be locked into that spending year over year. Budget needs can shift year over year. They can shift within the course of a year, and the city is entitled to its flexibility to make those determinations. HB1 instead empowers the Administration Commission to amend or modify line by line any item within the operating budget of a law enforcement agency. And it doesn't really set forth a meaningful mechanism for judicial review, which basically means once the Administration Commission reaches decision, that's final. We believe it's unconstitutional for the governor and his cabinet to insert themselves between local governments and their constituents like this. And over the past few weeks, we've been touched with several elected officials from cities across the state. And those conversations have revealed, over and over, that HB1 is an assault on the ability of the local governments to respond to their constituents. And it carries many unfortunate and unintended consequences in terms of stifling conversation and debate on reform. To date, the cities of Gainesville, Lake Worth Beach, Lauderdale, Miramar, North Miami, North Miami Beach, and Wilton Manor have already passed resolutions authorizing this litigation. We believe some others are poised to join us as well, and we are confident that we are going to build a growing coalition of cities to challenge HB1. And our plan is to file that litigation in state court in the next three weeks. And I'll pass it off to my colleague, Burbet.
Again, good afternoon, commission. I'm going to be speaking to you all about the team that we've built that is prepared to bring this case, litigate this case, and win this case. Our team consists of the Public Rights Project, Community Justice Project, Southern Poverty Law Center, along with pro bono counsel Jenner and Block, and a panel of local government law professors. We are all uniquely skilled to bring this case. Between this coalition of more than 20 attorneys, we have more than 150 years of experience in affirmative litigation. Dozens of those years are experienced litigating in Florida. The Public Rights Project has worked with 70 local government partners and has represented municipal governments from state courts all the way up to the U.S. Supreme Court. Community Justice Project has extensive history bringing impact litigation cases throughout Florida on behalf of various constituents and communities throughout the state. Most recently, Community Justice Project, along with the Southern Poverty Law Center, represented the city of South Miami in its challenge to SB 168, requiring local governments to expend maximum local resources to enforce federal immigration law. And we were successful in that case. The Southern Poverty Law Center, as you all know, is a venerable civil rights organization, well-known for its numerous litigation victories, including dozens of landmark cases that have brought systemic reform throughout the deep south. And for over 50 years, the Southern Poverty Law Center has been a catalyst for racial justice in the South and beyond. We have also enlisted the assistance of Jenner and Block, a leading national firm with extensive litigation prowess. It is known for its significant commitment to pro bono work and has been ranked number one for pro bono commitment by American Lawyer 11 times. Finally, the Local Solution Support Center and their panel of local government professors are on board. This team has led the charge on combating abuses of state preemption throughout national amicus efforts to defend local democracy. This also includes, most recently, supporting Atlanta and Austin in their successful challenges against orders of governors over masking. These professors are experts in home rule and state constitutional protections. So again, as, just to reiterate what John said from Public Rights Project, we are prepared to bring this case pro bono without any cost to our coalition of cities. I'll pass it to Paul now to speak a little bit more about the case.
Thank you, Burbet. My name is Paul Chavez. I'm an attorney with the Southern Poverty Law Center, and I work out of our office here in Miami. So at the heart of this lawsuit is the principle that the Florida Constitution protects local budgeting authority from state overreach. So together, our legal team has reviewed and collaborated on the claims that are included in the complaint, and we believe that it's important to use all the tools available to combat the troubling trend of state infringement on home rule. So the Florida Constitution's provisions protecting home rule states, and I'll quote it, "Municipalities shall have governmental, corporate, and proprietary powers to enable them to conduct municipal government, perform municipal functions, and render municipal services and exercise power for municipal purposes, except as otherwise provided by law." So I don't have to tell this body that local budgeting is one of the core municipal functions, and it's necessary for the facilitation of municipal services. Local governments, as you know, have limited resources to cover a variety of programs and must allocate those resources to best meet the needs of the municipality and their community. And the Florida Constitution protects local budgeting authority through its provision of home rule, separation of powers doctrine, and by the prohibition against unfunded mandates. Conversely, HB1 asserts the local budgeting process and allows the governor and his cabinet to dictate purely local decisions. The state executive branch has no place in making budgeting decisions for localities, localities that know their resources and know their community mandates better than anyone else. So to prevent and combat the harm of HB1, it is our recommendation to file an affirmative case brought on behalf of a coalition of cities. And we make this recommendation for three key reasons. First, affirmative litigation can invalidate HB1 Section 1 in its entirety. Waiting to challenge an individual decision by the Administration Commission is not as impactful, and it would require several other intervening steps. An affirmative case could be filed now. Secondly, an affirmative case provides the opportunity to challenge the law as part of a bigger movement, including as a part of a coalition of cities. HB1 has had a universal deterrent effect on budgeting, but each city's unique economic circumstances triggers HB1 just a bit differently. So joining this coalition is not just important because of the idea that there being strength of the powers, but for the strength of the actual claims that will have in the lawsuit. And third, filing a case now means standing up against the impact that HB1 is having here and elsewhere right now. Every city's budgeting process is affected by HB1 because there is now a mechanism to override decisions that the cities will make. And that's a power that should not be taken from cities. Your community is harmed by HB1, and Tallahassee's power is being curtailed. So now is the time to challenge HB1, and we urge Tallahassee to join this growing coalition. And we thank you for your time. If there's any questions, we're happy to address those.
Thank you. Mayor and commissioners, if there are any questions for this panel, they're available to answer those questions.
Well, I have a question for you before we open it up for public comment, and then... Or do we want to do public comment first?
Public comment.
Let's do public comment first. All right, Mr. Clerk.
Mayor, we do have speakers on this item. The first is Stanley Sims, and then Michael McLaughlin.
Thank you for joining us today. You name an address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Stanley Sims. I'm at 1320 Avondale Way. Before I speak on the subject matter, I just want to say that I stand in solidarity and wearing this pink for all of those who, like my mom, is fighting cancer. We pray and extend our love for them. We also want to thank Commissioner Cox, your aide. My mama wanted to know if she was going again this year. Cancer is very real in our community, along with this pandemic. So we ask that you show more than a little pink, but show a little love. On the issue that is before us, Mayor, it's like what you said when we were talking about masks. This bill is unconstitutional because we believe in home rule. And the reason why this bill is so unconstitutional, the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King said, "What makes America great is the right to protest, peaceful protest." And what this bill has done has divided our community. This bill is not even applied equitably. A red truck ran into peaceful protesters, and the state attorney did not file charges. Nineteen Tallahasians sat down peacefully and were charged. Right now, our geographic location is the primary reason why you, as a commission, should join, because we have visitors... join, because we have visitors not all from Florida, but all over the world that will come here. And because of current politics and our current governor, we are now drawing folks from the outside. I understand that everything must be done decent and in order. But I'm privileged to tell you that there is enough laws on the books already to handle an individual who were protesting disorderly. Under this current bill, commissioners--
You're at 30 seconds.
--under this current bill, Rosa Parks would be guilty of a felony. Under this current bill, the people who we admire could be charged with a felony. And so I urge you to support in being a part of the lawsuit to overturn this unconstitutional bill.
You're at three minutes.
Let's not forget our dying king.
Thank you, Ms. Sims. The next speaker.
Next is Michael McLaughlin, followed by Trish Brown. Mayor, I forgot to mention, for our speakers who aren't familiar with our process, each speaker has three minutes for remarks. If you'll give a name and address, I'll start your three minutes. And there will also be a light there in front of the mayor that turns yellow and then red.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Michael McLaughlin. I'm at 100 Cade Street, Department 205. And as you know, I'm a member of the Tallahassee Community Action Committee, which was one of the organizations who fought against HB1 when it was still in the legislation. Also, of course, I encourage the City Commission to take action, too, and approve the resolution authorizing the filing of a lawsuit challenging HB1. As Florida's capital city, Tallahassee has a particularly important role in joining this lawsuit. And as our elected officials, we ask that you support our rights and do the right thing by joining this lawsuit. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
Next is Trish Brown. And then the only other speaker on this item, Mayor, will be Jeff Blair via Webex.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Trish Brown. And again, I'm a civilian here in this community, citizen. I'm part of the Tallahassee Community Action Committee, and I live on 1316 Levy Avenue. I'm also one of the members of the Tally 19. I'm the catalyst as far as like the unjust arrest of 18 protesters and a warrant still out there that nobody has a name on. But the thing is, is that HB1 was a direct attack on us. Everybody should have the right to protest and speak freely without feeling threatened or being taken to jail. My thing is, is that, again, a truck ran into a group of protesters and harmed them. A gunman came in and almost harmed a group of protesters on the 29th of August. And then on September 5th, I was driving too slow, and that was enough to arrest me and 18, I mean, 17 others. So something's wrong here. But my thing is, is that HB1 definitely threatens every man, woman, and child. I would want you to think about your children when it comes down to like having them have the right to freedom of speech and speaking out about what they feel is unjust in their community, in their state, in their nation. So my thing is, is that you have to decide what side are you going to be on, folks. And my thing is, is that I would hope that you want to be on the winning side when it comes down to moral impact and uplifting and empowerment as far as our community. So please be a part of this lawsuit. It's so important. Let's not, we need you to protect our First Amendment freedom of speech rights to be able to like protest. We pay taxes in this community, and these roads are ours. We built these roads. My dad grew up here, and he was, you know, he helped build that. His generations of black slaves and everything, they helped build this community. So let's have a little respect for the ancestors and Martin Luther King and the people here today that paved the road to like continue to keep us having the freedom of speech, having the freedom to say what we want without feeling threatened or feeling like we're going to get harmed. So I ask you humbly to please support in the fight against HB1 and be a part of this lawsuit. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk, our next speaker.
Next is Jeff Blair, and--
Are you able to hear me?
When ready.
I'm ready. So I'm Jeff Blair, 1803 Old Fort Drive, Tallahassee, Florida. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I agree with the Public Rights Project, the Community Justice Project, and the Southern Poverty Law Center that committee substitute for House Bill 1's impacts on our local government's authority is egregious and strategic. Local government should be afforded the right to make policy and governance decisions that best reflect the needs of our community. This is fundamental to Florida's home rule doctrine. Our supposed anti-big government and pro-small government legislators and governors continually speak in favor of getting governments off of our backs, all the while passing laws preempting a local government's constitutional right to home rule and self-determination at the local level. We have seen this with legislation and executive orders prohibiting local governments from making decisions on issues such as efforts to protect the environment, control growth, require payment for infrastructure, and implementing public health protection measures. It's time to stand up and challenge this blatant effort to further strangle our community's rights to self-determination. I urge you to take legal action either by filing a lawsuit, challenging committee substitute for House Bill 1, or to enter an agreement with the Community Justice Project, the Public Rights Project, and the Southern Poverty Law Center to challenge this egregious, overreaching, usurping, and unconstitutional power grab by the Florida Legislature and Governor. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk, any more speakers?
No further speakers on this item.
Okay. Before we turn to commission comment direction, Madam Attorney, so we have four options in front of us. One is to take no action. The fourth is City Commission direction. We actually have option number two and number three if this body decides to move forward. Please walk us through number two and number three, keeping in mind that if this body decides not to take any action, that would be option number one.
All right. So if you approve the resolution, that means you are agreeing to join any other cities or even file yourself if other cities decide not to join a challenge to HB1. You basically are determining that it is in the public interest. And then option three basically just authorizes me to enter into a professional services agreement, which we always do with any firm who provides outside counsel, because we have certain professional standards that we want to make sure are here, too. So that's the purpose of number three.
So if the commission decides no action, the appropriate motion would be for option one.
That is correct.
If the commission decides to take action and join, the appropriate motion would be option two and option three.
Correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure we're all on the same page. Let's open it up for discussion. I brought this item before. I think you know where I stand on this, and I'm ready to move forward, but I want to hear from each and every one of y'all as well.
I would move options two and three, Mr. Mayor, as recommended by staff.
Okay.
I would second that.
Commissioner Richardson has properly moved option number two and option number three. It's been seconded by Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox. Let's open it up for further discussion.
May.
Sure. Commissioner Mattel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you to all the organizations that have come forward to help push back on this really overreach of state government and to what we can do locally. You know, this law is largely a solution looking for a problem. And unfortunately, in its search for a problem, it has overstepped its boundaries into our local control of our budgets. I just want to make it clear, on two points, Madam Attorney, the cost to the city of Tallahassee if we join is $0.
That is correct. The nonprofits have stated, and they stated here for you tonight, that there would be no cost as to legal attorney's fees or costs.
Okay. So moving forward today, really the only thing we have to gain is control of our local dollars and our local budget. So I wholeheartedly support that, and I think what's presented in the item makes sense. But I also can't, I think, when we start talking about people's right to free speech and their right to protest, I think we need to be consistent every day in every way. You know, I watched in horror on September 5th, 2020, when we saw 200 law enforcement officers in full tactical gear. We saw at least one dog. We saw at least one person lifted by the hair of their head from the ground to largely peaceful protesters in orange safety vests. So I'm glad, it seems, we'll take action against this rule, but I hope we can find consistency in our management, how we treat the right to free speech and the right to protest going forward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. Any other comment? Commissioner Williams-Cox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Attorney, I do support this as well, second the motion, but I do know that there are other cities that are struggling with this. And I do know that it's not perfect yet. But I think that the city of Tallahassee, being the capital of the state of Florida, we're accustomed to leading. And I think that joining this effort at no cost, financial cost, I know there'll be maybe some other costs, but no financial cost to us, I think that it sends a message, too, because we're here at the seat of government for the state of Florida, and the one who made this happen lives here. So I think that it is proper that we send a message to the rest of the state that we don't think is okay either. And I agree that we need to be consistent in how we do this, because, you know, there was a protest recently in South Florida where people were allowed to do some of these very things that this bill was supposed to be to prevent, but we've seen no repercussions for those who participated. And so what we need to make sure of is that we are part of something to define where the line is and where we're going to allow the line to be going forward, in that we do believe and fight really hard for home rule. As we see in the school districts are fighting for home rule, there's a great encroachment upon what we can do as locals compared to the heavy hand that we're getting from on high. I've watched as the county is dealing with the Department of Health levying a fine on them. I've never heard of a state agency being able to do that to a local government. I thought it was Department of Revenue who levied taxes and collected taxes and that kind of thing. And here we are, we're going, we're just, we're out of structure, we're out of bounds, we're, I don't know where we are, we're in orbit. And I think that this sends a message that enough, enough. So thank you for your guidance, and thank you for your education on this, and thank you to the attorneys, the Southern Law Poverty Center, and others. I look at the resumes of the individuals who are involved. These are not fly-by-night attorneys. These are folks who've done their work, they've done, they know their craft, and I feel confident that us joining this will help other cities decide to join as well. So I fully support it.
Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I fully support this item as well. I think it's an egregious overstep. I am proud to take this action, and I want to thank everyone who, all the organizations who are supporting us and leading the way, and I do hope that it sends a message and ultimately that we are successful in overturning this law. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing any further comment? The motion on the table made by Commissioner Richardson is for option number two, option number three, seconded by Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox. See no further comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Passes unanimously, 5-0. We're on item number 13.02. Mr. Manager? For Madam Attorney.
Mr. Mayor, this item was jointly prepared by the City Attorney's Office and Growth Management, and the City Attorney will introduce it.
Wonderful.
Thank you, Mayor and City Manager. Item number 13.02 is Lamar Digital Off-Site Advertising Request. This item is a request for approval of two variable message sign faces in exchange for the redemption of certificates that were issued for the removal of five off-site advertising signs. Lamar has proposed replacement of existing off-site advertising sign faces with digital variable message signs at 3252 Mahan Drive and 2847 South Monroe Street. The city's land development code provides an incentive for sign owners to remove existing signs in exchange for variable message signs. As a condition of approval, the City Commission determines that the removal of existing signs and replacement with a variable message signs is necessary or desirable for the public health, safety, and welfare. The removal of existing signs will promote general welfare by removing visual clutter and improving the general aesthetics. Recommended action is to approve two variable message sign faces in exchange for redemption of certificates that were issued for the removal of five off-site advertising signs. Aaron Jumerville, Department Director of Growth Management, is present should there be any questions.
Excellent. Mr. Clerk, do we have, well, first of all, Dr. Jumerville, would you like to provide comment or? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I think the City Attorney accurately summed up the request, and we are supportive of it.
Thank you. I know y'all have been working hard on this. Appreciate it. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
We have no speakers on this item.
Okay. Any further comment, Mr. Manager?
No, sir.
Okay. Let's turn it for direction and comment to my colleagues.
Move option one, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Commissioner Richardson has properly moved option number one, seconded by Commissioner Porter. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Passes unanimously, 5-0. We are on item number 13.03. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, sir. Let me ask Robert Culverhouse, our real estate director, to come forward as I introduce this item. At your September 8th meeting--
Before you get too far down, let me recognize the mayor pro temp.
Yes, sir.
If you don't mind.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Across the street from this property, I own a business, and while there's no benefit to me personally, in consultation with the City Attorney, it's recommended that due to the appearance of a conflict, I'm going to recuse myself from this.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, sir. At your September 8th meeting, you accepted pending final approval and offered to purchase the vacant parcel owned by the city of Tallahassee located at 650 West Gaines Street for $4 million. Additionally, you directed staff to issue public notice regarding the sale of the property consistent with your policy number 136. That process has now concluded, and this is the final step, which seeks your approval for the sale of the property, again, at 650 West Gaines Street to the 908 Group Holdings LLC. I believe they're in attendance today. Mr. Mayor, I'd like Robert Culverhouse to just give a brief background and status summary for the benefit of everybody at this time.
Please.
Thank you, Manager. Bring up the map just so we could remind ourselves which piece of property we're talking about. Mayor, Commissioners, good afternoon. Today, we are continuing our discussion of the city-owned property located at 650 West Gaines Street, which was purchased in 2016 as part of a project to construct a drainage facility from Madison Street to Lake Alberta. The construction project is complete, and at the time of the 2016 purchase, the intent was to resell this property once the project was finished and we had a good real estate market. On September 8th, as the manager mentioned, the commission approved receipt of the unsolicited offer and directed staff to provide public notices consistent with policy 136. On September 9th, notices of the proposed sale were mailed to 399 adjacent and surrounding property owners and tenants located within 1,000 feet of the property. Also, on September 9th, a sign was posted on the Gaines Street site, and notice of the proposed sale was posted on the city's website. In addition, notices were published in the Tallahassee Democrat and the Capitol Outlook the week of September 13th. As noted in the agenda item, one written response was received as a result of these public notifications. Staff responded to the query and provided information as well. Staff is recommending option one. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
We do, Mayor. We have several here in chambers, and then we have one connected virtually.
Okay. Walk us through.
We'll begin with Ed Murray as our first speaker on this item, followed by Brad Wolf.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Sure, I'm Ed Murray. My address is 1018 Thomasville Road. First of all, in disclosure, I'm the real estate broker on this transaction, to let everybody know. But what I'm really speaking about, I was a former-- But what I'm really speaking about, I was a former chairman of the Gaines Street Vitalization Committee from probably 2008 to 2013, and this is exactly in line with the vision of that. It's to provide housing, to provide the right scale, and it's everything that we wanted when we were on that committee. Also, the price is incredible. If you look at it, it's $88 a square foot, which is setting a mark around in that area. So I would encourage everyone to move this forward and pass it. Thank you.
You, our next speaker.
Brad Wolf, and then Jared Willis.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Brad Wolf, 9200 Treasure Lane Northeast in St. Petersburg, Florida. And I also had a presentation if you don't mind. Okay, I'm just going to briefly go through the same presentation I went through last time, just to refresh your memory. This is 650 West Gaines. This is similar to what we will build on site if this is approved tonight. This is the location that Robert Culverhouse just mentioned. This is just a view of the underutilized dirt parking lot that serves this site now. This is the same view from the other side of the site. Again, this is a rendering of what we would propose to be similar to what we'll build on the site. And this is a map of the college town area of the vast amount of experience that we have had in the area. The nine in the top left, State House Varsity and State House Arena over by the Civic Center, all of those are fully built, operational, students live there and really enjoy it. The two other blue squares near college town, State House 2.1 and 2.2, which we haven't formally named yet, you'll see construction fencing by those now. We just started construction. We're about to demolish those old buildings and build very nice housing there. Now in the bottom right corner, you'll see the city site that we propose to redevelop if approved us tonight. This is just a quick photo of the nine at Tallahassee, right across the street from the dorms at FSU. This is a photo of State House Varsity next to Doak Campbell Stadium where that old gas station was where people used to park. This is a photo of State House Arena. This was just finished in August along with State House Varsity over by the Civic Center. This is one of the two properties that we just started construction on, so this is a photorealistic rendering of the one on the southeast corner. And this is the photorealistic rendering of the one on the northeast corner. Just a quick overview, as Ed Murray said, you know, this is significantly above market value, largely in part because we've been able to assemble several parcels around this site, which is very hard and unusual to develop without other parcels. And as a quick update to that, we've successfully gotten those parcels under contract since last meeting in September, so that process is moving along very well. As I stated last hearing as well, this property, once developed, will increase tax revenue $375,000 for the city parcel alone, and then once we add on the other two parcels that we've assembled, that'll do another $300,000 in tax revenue. It'll create 400-plus construction jobs, several of which will be minority and women-owned businesses. It'll create 15 to 20 permit jobs, and as Ed and Robert stated, it's very compatible and exactly what was envisioned in this corridor. So thank you very much for your time.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, our next speaker.
Jared Willis, and then our last speaker will be via WebEx, and that'll be Taylor Bureau.
Okay. Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Jared Willis, 1206 North Uvald Street. I'm on the Board of Grow Tallahassee, just want to speak in favor of the sale. As the last two speakers said, it's going to add value to the property tax rolls, it's going to create jobs, it's going to bring greater outside investment to our community. Great project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, our next speaker.
Taylor Bureau. The connection was made earlier. I'm looking for the name.
Here at the bottom. Taylor, are you with us?
Oh, there we go. Taylor, your three minutes will start when you begin.
Taylor, are you with us? One more time. Taylor, are you with us by chance?
Mayor, that's the last speaker I had on this item.
All right. I'm afraid that we've lost connection with Taylor. One more time. Taylor, are you with us? Let's go ahead and just open it up for discussion. Comment, direction? Yes. Commissioner Williams-Cox.
I have a question. I know when we dealt with this a few weeks ago, we were, I want to be, this may have been answered, I want to be clear. We have received no additional offers since we had this discussion at the last meeting.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. No additional offers.
Okay. I move staff recommendation.
Second.
All right. Staff recommendation has been properly moved by Commissioner Williams-Cox, it's been seconded by Commissioner Richardson, Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are clearly several benefits that have been outlined to this, to this project. It wasn't too long ago that I was a college student living in college town, and I experienced many of the benefits of that, of the reduced traffic, the walkability, the amenities, and I do recognize that. Some of you know that I do have a master's in planning, and so I bring that to this position, and sometimes I really don't even know where to begin with some of the decisions we're making, because I'm just coming from such a different place. So while I see the benefits, what we don't discuss, and, you know, I can see where this is going, in general, I mean, I just, publicly owned land is such a scarce commodity. I understand the intent for which it was purchased, and even the plans thereafter. I would just love when we do things like this and when we consider these decisions, for us to really think about how we can make creative use of these public spaces, whether it's a plaza, whether it's a little park. I mean, I frankly, I talk about this a lot in even our agenda materials. With all due respect, you know, for our agenda to say the cons of this as loss of one interim use dirt parking lot, that really fails to capture the opportunity costs of every decision we make. There's a lot we could do with that lot. We are, I take seriously my responsibility for the financial decisions, the financial health of the city, and protecting and safeguarding the tax dollars and the public. That being said, we are not a business. Our police department, I doubt, brings in a very high return on our investment, dollars and cents wise. What we do as a city is what others don't do because there is no profit incentive in it. We take care of people who need help, we think of things that are above and beyond the financial incentives. For thousands of years, and I'm going to get off my soapbox very quickly, cities have been planned in certain ways to be walkable, to be accessible, to be community-minded, to be incremental, to be at scale with people. You think of the best cities in the world to this day, Paris, Rome, you know, I mean, just name them off, they look nothing, they have more in common with each other for thousands and thousands of years of their existence than any American cities, contemporary cities do today, and just the trends of planning. So, you know, with that being said, I just, it hurts me to see the lack of character, the lack of creativity, the lack of imagination in how we approach planning and the kind of scale and vision that I think is appropriate and benefits all of the public. So for that reason, I won't be supporting this, but I, you know, I support the Gaines Street vision. I am grateful for the business that y'all are doing here. I respect the work you do, but that's simply where I'm at. Thank you.
Any further comment? Seen none. The motion on the table is for option number one, properly made by Commissioner Williams-Cox, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
It passes three to one with Commissioner Porter in dissent with Commissioner Matlow out of chambers having recused himself. We are on item number 13.04. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me ask our general manager of Community Beautification and Waste Management to come forward as I introduce this item. Actually, he's on WebEx, if we can pull him up via WebEx. This item is seeking your approval to award an emergency two-year contract with a one-year renewal option to Southern Property Management Services for landscaping services, and largely this is our right-of-way mowing and litter control contract. In February 2020, you approved the award of the contract to lawnkeepers. Lawnkeepers elected in August to terminate the contract, they simply couldn't keep up with it, which put us in the posture of having to do a procurement process. That is now complete. We did get one response. It was a good response, however, it represents an 11% increase in price. I'd like Reginald O'Fahney, again, our general manager of Community Beautification and Waste Management, just to add some more points on this. I think it shouldn't be lost on anybody, that the impact of the pandemic, the labor shortages, difficulty to provide services clearly ripples through the entire economy and service sector, and I think that's what we see here. Reginald and his group have done a good job with stopgap measures, and I'd like him just to share a few words.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, and the City Manager. Thank you so very much for giving me this great opportunity. One of the things that has happened in the past is, we do have properties that we keep, that we acquire, and part of acquiring that is that we have to find ways to supplement our staffing, and to do so, we do contract out with vendors, and the vendor that just left us apparently has been with us for a while, but for some reason, of course, part of the post-pandemic issues that we're dealing with is staffing. He was unable to, you know, do the job. He had difficulties starting from somewhere around June, and then July, and then subsequently when we got closer to August, he had difficulty, had very many, less staffing to do the job. And so we were able to take over. He basically told us he couldn't do it, so we had to rearrange our staffing, and when we say we arrange our staffing, it means there are certain things that we used to do or would normally do, we couldn't do those things. We had to use some of those staffing to supplement and take care of the city. And for sure, you know, it's not like we've done excellently well, but there has been some things that we couldn't do, and do, so, and that's what sometimes you see when you talk about litter issues, and we talk about overgrowth in certain areas, and that is just trying to supplement and make good things to go through. And even in our situation, our staffing were not even any different from what is going on in our society. We have staffing issues too, and we hire, and most often people will tell you they want to work, but for a short period of time, they work sometimes a month or less, and they leave. And thank goodness, Commissioners, you all basically, you know, approved a $15 minimum, and those $15 is good, but what we're seeing now is that other vendors or private sectors are paying more, and so when these employees come, sometimes we know that the job that we give or that we allow them to do, it's not an easy job, working on the side of the road, cars passing by, things happening, and whether it rains or shines, it doesn't matter, the work has to be done to some degree. And so we're seeing those type of things happen, and so as a result, you're seeing staff attrition, staff reduction, or a lot of times you see folks just, you know, feel like they need to go do something else. And that is exemplified by even when we did an RFQ, we sent it to eight vendors, only one responded, and that tells the story of what we, everybody's going through in the industry. But, you know, I understand the fact that, yes, our city may not be the way it should. We are trying to do our best, but I'll tell you, I'm not happy of what we're doing. I don't think that we are doing what we should be doing in terms of meeting the cleanliness of what Tallahassee is supposed to be, but I feel the need that we will do something better, and there are a lot of things that, of course, we know we don't control the litter issues. Litters are people driving or not securing their load correctly, and those things fly, fly out of their vehicle, and it litters the area. Commercial establishments, some of them sometimes sell things, and they don't take care of the surrounding areas, but again, this is not for us to blame anybody, but to say, we are working towards a solution. I know that those solutions are not going to be easy. It may require us to do some things that some establishments may not be comfortable with, but that's what we're seeing that is happening in our city. It's a great city, and by no means are we saying that, you know, we can't solve this problem, we can, you know, and it's like, it's like most things that we've, you know, attempted to do, we start somewhere and we end up to where we believe is a viable option that we can all live with. So that's what's going on, and this agenda item basically is asking for your approval to rectify the emergency contract, and we were lucky to have Southern Group that basically says that, yes, they can do so. But in doing that, we did ask, how much are they paying these, their workers? Because we wanted to make sure they are consistent with what we believe is our value in terms of compensation. And the general manager I spoke with, Josh, he's the owner of the company, basically says he pays $15 an hour. So that is consistent, unlike, before my vendor wasn't paying probably about $10 an hour. So he was basically training people to go somewhere and make $12 or $13 or whatever the amount is. So we're hoping that we find a way that we can start getting our city back and try and keep it as clean as we can. Basically, so we're asking for your approval to rectify the emergency contract with Southern Group. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Nothing else to add. As Mr. O'Fahney indicated, this will get us back to full speed where we were, and we've done it through a procurement process, and fortunately, we did get a good responsive proposal.
Any problems with the procurement process?
No, sir.
Excellent. Mr. Clerk, do we have any speakers on this item?
No, sir.
Sum it up for direction and comment.
Move staff recommendation on option number one.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Richardson for staff recommendation of option number one, seconded by Commissioner Porter. Any further comment? Seen none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. Item number 13.05. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item involves the contract for facility security that is provided by Giddens Security Corporation. A state contract was used for these services from January through July of '21. During that period, a competitive process was conducted, and you authorized the award to Giddens, I believe that was in May of '21. It included services for City Hall, the Renaissance Building, the Gemini Building, Cascades Park, and the two city parking garages, East Side and Clayman. We're seeking your approval to confirm the payment to Giddens for the service they provided during the state contract, as well as adjusting the scope of services to include the new Cascade Park Garage, Messer Park, CK Steel, and other sundry of other facilities. This will be supported by our general fund, but also by the departments that inhabit or occupy, rather, some of those facilities. So we're seeking your approval of this action tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Are there any public speakers on this item?
No, sir.
Colleagues?
Move staff recommendation on option number one. Mr. Mayor pro temp.
Second.
We have a motion on the table for option one by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Commissioner Williams-Cox. For comment, Commissioner Porter.
Thank you. Do we have anyone from Giddens Security here or on WebEx? It's not necessary that we do. The reason I ask is I have in the past gotten emails from at least two people just expressing some concern about treatment of people with, who are differently abled by security, and that is just if we can communicate that message, sometimes it's, you know, people who are in a wheelchair, who are driving a car, and they do not necessarily know that they're in a wheelchair, and they're kind of wait, they need assistance. I just would love that message to be communicated somehow, because it is something that I've heard about from at least two constituents, so if we could just relay that message, I would appreciate that, but I'm comfortable moving forward.
We certainly will. Thank you, Commissioner.
All right. Motion on the table is made by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Commissioner Williams-Cox for the staff recommendation. Any further comment? Seen none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All those opposed? Passes unanimously 5-0. 13.06 was pulled. We're on item number 13.07. Mr. Sutton, good to see you, sir.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Item number 1307 requests your approval of the City Auditor's/Inspector General's Annual Audit Plan. The development of an audit plan is required by City Commission Policy 104, the audit policy. It was developed using a risk-based analysis, and on September 16th, it was approved by the city's Audit Committee, and they recommend your approval as well. There are a couple of audits that are coming up for this year that I would like to just briefly identify. We're looking at doing a city audit of parking. The city has recently taken over responsibility for managing the city's parking lots, where we had previously retained Republic Parking to manage those parking. And we want to make sure that proper internal controls and processes are in place now that we've brought that in-house. A second audit that I wanted to highlight was an audit of internal controls in the Community Services Department. This is a fairly new department for the city, and we want to help that department get off on the right foot and ensure proper internal controls are in place for things such as purchasing, HR activities, and budgeting. So, we really want to help make sure that department gets off on the right foot and doesn't make errors through ignorance or not having proper procedures in place. And then, the other one I wanted to point out was an audit of citywide travel. Every year, the city has to do travel for business purposes, and we want to make sure that there's internal controls in place for ensuring that city travel is for public purpose and that it stays within established policies and procedures. So, with that, I seek your approval for the fiscal year 2022 audit plan.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
All right. Submit it up for direction and comment.
Move staff recommendation on option number one, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Commissioner Richardson has properly moved staff recommendation, seconded by Commissioner Porter. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously 5-0. Dennis, give up the great work. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Do we have any other items to come before us under policy formation and direction, Mr. Manager?
No, sir. We do not.
All right. We are on un-agenda business speakers. Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir, Mayor. We do have speakers this evening. The first is Erwin Jackson.
How many speakers we have, by the way?
Let me count real quick. We have nine in person and two virtually connected.
Excellent. Let me remind anybody that is here that would like to speak, please, we encourage you, fill out a card, turn it into the clerk's office, and we'll make sure that everyone has the opportunity to speak. Dr. Jackson, thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please. I'm going to ask you, everybody, to try to stick to the five, three minutes as much as you can, sir.
Very good. Before I begin administrative thing, this is the first training. I heard they found this microphone, the...
We got the camera set up for you, sir.
Erwin Jackson, 1341 Jackson Bluff. Commissioners, for 10 years, I've worked to expose the corruption that's controlled our local government. I want to say publicly that I believe this is the most honest commission our community has had in the past 20 years. You are not responsible for this corruption, but you certainly are responsible to begin cleaning up the mess. Tonight, I will not be talking about ethics, but rather criminal actions. Tonight, I want the commission to clearly proclaim that lobbyists who actively participate in honest services, wire fraud, or other financial fraud will be permanently banned from representing any person or organization before the City Commission. If the violator is found guilty in a court of law or admits the crime under oath during a criminal investigation, it is this commission's responsibility to protect the public and cancel this person's registration as a city lobbyist. For example, the picture I've shown is Gary Yorden admitted under oath his guilt when he conspired with Scott Maddox to extort money from the McKibben Hotel Group, set up a front corporation, then immediately transferred the illegal money to a second corporation, Governance. And then, Scott's girlfriend, Paige, gave Scott the actual illegal funds. Why was there so much secrecy? Gary Yorden answered that in his testimony. He wanted to create a smaller target for Erwin Jackson to shoot at. Gary Yorden knew he was engaging in criminal activity. Some people say they would, that a permanent ban is really too harsh and prefer maybe a five-year ban. I disagree. Such a limited ban would allow Scott Maddox to get out of prison in five years and immediately sign up to be a registered lobbyist for the city of Tallahassee. I don't think this is a message or the new direction that the public is demanding. As you all know, a bribe only occurs if someone is willing to accept the money, but we also have to have someone willing to write the check. I would also strongly encourage the commission to establish a significant penalty for city vendors who also violate the honest service fraud and other financial fraud statutes. If a city vendor engages in this criminal activity, then they should be banned permanently from getting any further city contracts. The city is a large business, and many businesses could not function without city contracts. I don't believe a business would take the gamble of trying to bribe a city official and risk their future financial health. This new policy will require every business owner to be very cautious, ask a number of questions before they write a check and give it to a lobbyist or government official. In summary, will there be another city, another Scott Maddox or Gary Yorden who will engage in criminal behavior to benefit themselves financially?
Here at three minutes.
Thank you. Of course, there will. Of course, there will be others. We need to prepare now for their arrival.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Our next speaker.
Shelby Green, followed by Charlotte Stewart Tilly.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Hey, Commissioners. My name is Shelby Green, and my address is 519 Ingleside Avenue. I'm here today because after you all voted to improve the utility rates at the last meeting, I decided to go online to find out how much I can expect my utility bill to increase by. But when I went to the website, I accessed it before the budget, before the website was actually changed and the budget was approved. So, I'm referencing those numbers. When I went on there, I could not actually find the monthly customer charge for water services for residential. I went to the city ordinance, and it states it as $7.18. And I was like, okay, that's really weird. That's a lot lower than what I'm expecting. And so, then, an asterisk does mention a way to calculate it. So, it says the minimum charge includes customer charge and 25 cubic gallons of water usage. So, I went ahead and calculated that number, and it's $8.22. But when I compared it to my September utility bill, my utility bill is $8.34. So, there is a discrepancy of about 12 cents. And I actually asked my neighbors, I asked a couple of my friends to send me their utility bills, and they're also being, they were also being charged $8.34, not $8.22. So, I do have a question about that. I would like to know why there's a discrepancy and why the city ordinance hasn't been updated since 2018, even though the customer charges were updated. That's my main question. Yes, that is. That is it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I am sure that we'll have the appropriate staff follow up with this.
Yes, sir.
Our next speaker, please.
Charlotte Stewart Tilly, followed by Nia Ogletree.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Hello. My name is Charlotte Stewart Tilly. I live at East Indian Head Drive here in Tallahassee. I am a Gen Cleo Shattigist, and I use they/them and she/her pronouns. I'm here to talk about the natural gas and utilities proclamation at the start of the meeting. With no disrespect to our city utility workers, never in my life have I thought that natural gas needs a proclamation celebrating its success, more so as the city works towards its commitments to 100% renewable by 2050. When I've spoken to some of you before, I have heard that Tallahassee is doing enough to stop our part in the climate crisis. Despite my own reservations against that sentiment, I would like to ask, how do you think promoting a fossil fuel assists us in that goal? What message does it send to celebrate a fuel source containing methane, which has more than 80 times the warming power of carbon dioxide in the first 20 years after entering the atmosphere, is deserving of honor and praise? I am in support of the proposed change for the recognition of renewables within the proclamation, but I cannot imagine why this document felt necessary in the first place. I can't understand why anyone would think that this proclamation would do anything but waste the paper it was printed on. Tallahasians know better. You know better. I'm disappointed that you would even consider this proclamation, Mayor Daly. I am asking all of you, as the elected representatives of our city, to continue our fight against fossil fuels and not support this proclamation. What does a proclamation like this say about our city? Your constituents are here, and we are paying attention. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And that's, next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Is Nia Ogletree, and then Jackson Overlink.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Nia Ogletree, 8146 Chris Lane. Good afternoon, Commissioners and Mayor Daly. Thank you for allowing me to speak here. My name is Nia Ogletree. I'm a student at Florida State University and also a Tallahassee native. I want to thank you all, of course, for your work and dedication to Tallahassee. However, I'm here as a disappointed and frustrated constituent, and I want to address Mayor Daly's proposed natural gas proclamation. Your proclamation states falsely that natural gas is a clean resource, and natural gas is anything but that. It is a fossil fuel through and through. Natural gas is retrieved through fracking, which pollutes community water systems and endangers surrounding land areas. What's worse is that the process of fracking for natural gas emits extremely potent methane gas into the atmosphere, and this contributes to global warming and thus climate change. Methane gas also traps more, traps heat more than carbon dioxide, which is why it is such a harmful greenhouse gas. Is this commission really willing to put its community members at risk for cheap gas to power our homes? What happened to the Tallahassee that was committed to transitioning to real, clean, renewable energy? The city of Tallahassee is supposed to be a leader of public service. What public are you serving by actively supporting resources that worsen the climate crisis? It is us, the people here in this community, that will face the impact, the extreme heat, the flooding, the hurricanes, and the droughts. This proclamation will not serve me or my community. Mayor Daly, your proclamation also directly contradicts Tallahassee's clean energy plan, and I feel it's a massive setback. We are supposed to be committed to shifting away from fossil fuels like natural gas and towards cleaner renewable resources like solar power. And that information is directly on the city website. The community is counting on this commission to take the necessary actions to mitigate the effects of climate change. I want to emphasize to this commission that natural gas is not clean. You're promoting the use of dirty fossil fuels and doing so with a clean energy plan signed and in place. Natural gas is not sustainable, and it will not better our community. The prices might be low now, but continuing to use fossil fuels will cost us much more in the long run. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Jackson Overlink, and then Carolyn Burns.
Excellent. Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Jackson Overlink, 1605 Airport Drive. I am here today as a citizen of Tallahassee to express my disappointment with Mayor Daly's proclamation recognizing public power, public natural gas, and customer service weeks. Back in 2019, the city of Tallahassee passed a resolution to transition to 100% clean renewable energy by 2050 after Tallahasians came together to demand action on the climate crisis. Fracked natural gas cannot be a part of that solution. I have noticed a dangerous pattern of natural gas promotional messaging and incentives coming from our city's utility. This messaging is in direct contradiction with our commitment to clean energy, and today's proclamation follows that pattern. Natural gas produces fewer carbon emissions than other forms of fossil fuels. However, according to the Environmental Defense Fund, methane gas has 80 times the warming power of carbon dioxide in our atmosphere. Methane gas leaks into our atmosphere when it is extracted and produces carbon dioxide when it is burned for energy. Natural gas is just as harmful as any other fossil fuel, if not more so, according to the EPA. Natural gas and petroleum systems are one of the second-largest sources of methane emissions in the United States. The original proclamation claimed that natural gas is a clean, cost-effective alternative fuel. However, nothing about fracked natural gas is clean or cost-effective. Due to methane's potency and ability to accelerate our warming climate, that puts our economy in a worse position as stronger hurricanes, flooding, and extreme heat are all consequences of fossil-fueled extreme weather. All of this calls into question, how in good faith can the city of Tallahassee celebrate natural gas at this critical moment in the climate emergency? Every fraction of a degree of warming matters, and one of the easiest ways we can fight this escalating crisis is to reduce our methane emissions. Instead of uplifting natural gas, I ask that we shift our focus to truly clean and renewable sources of energy like solar. Tallahassee's solar farm is a point of pride in our community, and we should be celebrating that, not planet-warming natural gas. Please be mindful of the message that proclamations like this send to our community and to our youth. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please. Mr. Clerk.
Carolyn Burns, followed by Isabella McLean.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Carolyn Burns. I live at 8457 Manor Drive. Thank you. I am a resident of Tallahassee and a program manager for the Cleo Institute. I am also here to speak on the proclamation. I am so proud of the many ways in which this city, my city, has made progress with regard to environmental protection, climate adaptation, and resiliency, and clean renewable energy. The solar farm at the airport is a source of civic pride, as well as the Clean Energy Resolution and our commitment to get off fossil fuels. I also appreciate that we recognize our public workers. Energy workers are incredibly important to the functioning of our society and work tirelessly to restore power after storms and outages. They are unsung heroes and deserve more credit for what they do for us. These disruptions to utilities will only increase due to the climate crisis. We need linemen and women, maintenance technicians, and other staff more than ever. Public Power Week is a great way to celebrate them and the fact that we, as citizens, get to be stakeholders in our municipal utilities. However, part of this proclamation takes away from that work and undermines the progress we are making here in Tallahassee. It disappointed me to see natural gas listed as a clean energy source in the original proclamation and celebrated via Natural Gas Week. While the revised language is more accurate, it does not fully convey the harms posed by this fuel source. Natural gas is anything but. This is a greenwashing term for methane gas, which is most often produced by fracking, a process that pollutes groundwater and can lead to geologic instability. As this is a petroleum product, methane gas is extracted from between layers of rock. In this process, some can leak out, similar to the way a hose leaks around the spigot when watering a garden. It's impossible to capture all of this leakage, and thus methane escapes into the atmosphere, where it acts as a potent greenhouse gas with 84 times the heat-trapping potential of carbon dioxide. While methane gas may have a lower carbon footprint in terms of CO2 versus energy sources such as coal and oil, the long-term effects of methane release can be even more damaging. The inclusion of methane gas in a statement about reducing our carbon footprint is greenwashing at its finest, and I can't possibly imagine that the mayor and city commission have a goal of misleading our citizens. So, I hope that this information persuades you to celebrate our municipal utilities, the workers who keep them running, and our progress toward a sustainable future without catering to the same special interests that have been pushing petroleum products and fossil fuels at the expense of our health, our economic system, and our planet. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, our next speaker, please.
Isabella McLean, and then will be followed by Devin Graham.
Excellent. Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Hello. My name is Isabella McLean. I live on 2636 Mission Road. So, hello. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you all today. My name is Isabella McLean, and I am a concerned Tallahassee resident, speaking on behalf of enraged and anxious youth in the state of Florida. I find it incredibly disappointing that our local and state authorities continue to disregard the very evident causes of our warming atmosphere and its adverse effects on local residents. the very evident causes of our warming atmosphere and its adverse effects on local residents. I'm strongly opposed to Mayor Daley's proclamations of public natural glass, gas, and customer services week. We are constituents who elected you to represent our needs. Therefore, I do not understand the logic being used behind the original proclamation that celebrates the natural gas as so-called clean, cost-effective fuel. There's nothing cost-effective about a fossil fuel that will amplify the climate crisis and devastate our economy. The extraction of natural, natural gas often requires fracking, which has been proving to be detrimental in maintaining a clean groundwater supply. It also contributed, contributes to the worsening effects of climate change through methane leaks into the atmosphere, which is a greenhouse gas with a heating potential 80 times greater than that of carbon dioxide. We should not be celebrating natural gas companies. Also, fuel corporations have been funding misinformation campaigns about the climate crisis for decades, and this latest push for natural gas companies to rebrand natural gas as a sustainable transition fuel is just a continuation of that same propaganda. There's no room for debate concerning such high stakes on human lives. Implementing a sustainable future by phasing out fossil fuels is the only way to develop harmoniously with our environment, as was intended by the very essence of human design. It makes me question the decision process that surrounds this highly inappropriate natural gas week proclamation. The youth is here, our coalition is growing, and we are paying very close attention on how you are handling this climate crisis. Don't just hear us, but please listen and take action for your residents, for your children, and for yourselves. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Clark, our next speaker, please.
Devin Graham, and then Whitfield Leland.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Hey, Devin Graham, 2624 Mullen Drive. Um, I'm a state director with American Atheists, as well as the president of the Humanists of Tallahassee. And to say that Chief Revel's participation in the Billy Graham Evangelistic Association's law enforcement event is a disappointment would be an understatement. Chief Revel's tenure has been rife with controversy when it comes to blurring the tenuous line between church and state, which, based on the audio that came out of the event, is something that he's quite proud of. BGEA has a long and very well-known history of anti-LGBTQ rhetoric, from its founder Billy Graham himself, no relation, to his son and its current president Franklin Graham, definitely no relation, who said that he loved gay people just enough to care to warn them that if they want to continue living like this, it's the flames of hell for them. It's my firm belief that you can believe or not believe however you want. On December 15th of last year, our group asked the city to issue a proclamation for Religious Equality Day, which you did, and we thank you for that, because in our government, no belief has primacy over any other. Chief Revel needs to abide by that as well and decide if he wants to be the chief or the chaplain. And if he wants to remain as chief, it's necessary for him to speak with a secular and LGBTQ activists and citizens that are most affected by his words and actions to prevent this from happening again. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clark, our next speaker, please.
Whitfield Leland, and then John Harris Mauer.
Good afternoon, my name is Whitfield Leland.
Joining us, your name and address for the record, please.
754 West 7th Avenue. Um, tonight, I come before y'all. The last two weeks, we've seen five firearms, um, being taken out of schools. We've seen, Saturday, we seen, what, three shootouts? Um, thank God, at the one on Liberty and Pasco, I had my food truck out there, and the guys brought everything out of the food truck, and they had a block party, and when I left, I get a phone call three o'clock in the morning that my truck has been shot. Um, we not doing enough. To be totally honest, it ain't even really the police job to manage our community. Um, it's us. And I heard you made a couple of phone calls this weekend, and I'm gonna tell you, you're calling the wrong people. Y'all have to contact the people who are on the ground. These people that claim to be on the ground, I don't see them not one day in our community. Not saying they not doing no work, but if you're not on the ground, these people, these young guys that's out there carrying the guns, they are not listening to the people y'all are tapping on the shoulder. They not. At the end of the day, I've said this to Commissioner Cox, I said to Commissioner Richardson, I said to Commissioner Matlow, and I said to Jack Porter. You have to put the funding inside these communities with the people who get up and go to their programs every Saturday and not counsel, or, and actually work with these people in this community. For the lack of, and I'm gonna be honest, if we go back and we think about when Tallahassee peacemakers came, when they, when they hit the scene, crime rate was low. Not saying it didn't happen, but those guys interjected, they was on the streets two or three o'clock in the morning, and then boom, we don't see them no more. Why we don't see them no more? Y'all ain't ask yourself that question? Like, they made a difference, but the way that they wanted to do it, the powers that be's didn't think it was appropriate. At the end of the day, when you give somebody assignment, just like when y'all give Reese Gold and all them assignments to go and do stuff, when it come back, what y'all say? Based on staff recommendation. When you give somebody an assignment, you can't tell them how to get the job done. It don't work like that because y'all are not in the field. All I ask is that this commission and the police department, y'all don't have to like me, y'all don't have to agree with nothing I say. One thing I do stand on is I love my community, and I'm willing to work with everybody, and we need all hands on deck.
Thank you.
Period.
Thank you. Next speaker. Mr. Clark, our next speaker.
Yes, sir. Is John Harris Mauer, and then Tiffany Hill.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Absolutely. My name is John Harris Mauer, 201 East Park Avenue, Suite 200A. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, and City Manager. My name is John Harris Mauer, and I'm the Public Policy Director for Equality Florida, the state's largest civil rights organization dedicated to steering full equality for Florida's LGBTQ community. I've also lived in Tallahassee for more than a decade. I was married in Tallahassee, and I want to start a family in Tallahassee. Equality Florida is deeply disturbed by Chief Revel's recent appearance at the Billy Graham Evangelistic Association. We respect and honor every person's individual freedom of religion, and it is our mission to ensure that LGBTQ Tallahasians are respected and treated fairly. Chief Revel's appearance and remarks raise legitimate questions about that in the department. The Billy Graham Evangelistic Association is unambiguously anti-LGBTQ. The association recently published an article entitled "Standing Strong Against Godlessness" that addressed its position on same-sex marriage. Its president Franklin Graham has accused gay people of, quote, "recruiting children", has insisted, quote, "there is no place for compromise" on same-sex marriage, has praised Vladimir Putin for Russia's anti-LGBTQ propaganda, and has conflated celebrating LGBTQ pride with celebrating lying, adultery, or murder. That association flew Chief Revel in as a speaker expressly because of his position with the Tallahassee Police Department. His remarks focused on using your platform to advance your agenda, presenting Christ on your agenda, and working Christ into your agenda. It was expressly about the nexus of his faith and his role as the chief of police. Our questions and concerns are not about what Chief Revel does in his personal time, but we do have questions. Is a city official, particularly one in such a position of power, proselytizing to city employees, including LGBTQ ones? Chief Revel suggested that spreading knowledge of Jesus as a savior is among his top goals for the department. Why should that be a priority for TPD, and how is that being put into practice? When Chief Revel says that God placed him in his position for his purposes, what happens if the chief's faith is not fully supportive of the LGBTQ community, or people of other faiths, or people of no faith at all? Chief Revel has every right to observe his faith in his private capacity, and that faith may even drive him to be a better chief of police. But there is a line here to be respected. The LGBTQ community has questions, and we want to hear that Chief Revel understands that line and abides by it when serving Tallahasians, including LGBTQ Tallahasians. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Ms. Clark.
Tiffany Hill, and that's the final speaker here in chambers. We do have connect, two connected, bit webex.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, my name is Tiffany Hill. I'm at 504 Putnam Drive, Tallahassee, Florida, and I'm here today to basically kind of give you all an update on what I experienced with, um, the relocation process for Orange Avenue Apartments. Um, personal opinion is in disarray. It's, I'm finding a lot of misconceptions, um, about the relocation plan. If there really is a, a plan, it's not stable at all. The one thing that we talked about in the beginning is why? Why do they want to demolition the Orange Avenue Apartments? Well, the first thing that was brought up was because of the age. Orange Avenue Apartments was built in 1970, right? So, um, the next thing was the, how deplorable they were, and that there could be no renovation done to them. So, I went on, they actually, during their relocation process, they gave out a list of housing for the tenants to go out and see and take a look at. Well, if you look at, but it's actually, um, this is 1213, and, and you can probably pull it up on your phones, 1213 Richmond Street. This is a house that, um, I'm sorry, that's poor, but it's 1213 Richmond Street, and the house is actually built in 1953, and the house has window AC units. It looks horrible. So, I'm confused as to how that's comparable to the Orange Avenue Apartments. It's not. It's not comparable. They're having a hard time finding housing comparable, decent, safe, according to HUD regulations, safe, decent housing for these people. Four bedrooms and five bedrooms? You can ask all the tenants there that live in the four and five bedrooms. They're having a hard time, and people are panicking and they're getting stressed out. They're taking the vouchers and they, you know, one young lady, um, put in a notice to her job, a two-week notice, just to try to do the, the transfer her, her voucher to Atlanta, and guess what? They don't have that available right away, and who's gonna pay for her movement? And when I asked the relocation people that are not qualified to really be relocation staff, um, they told me, oh, it would cost about $1,400. I don't know if they haven't did any research, but I researched, and I contacted a mayor movers, and they said that something like that could cost up to $5,000 for a move from here to Atlanta. So, are they paying for that? Or are they expecting the tenants to pay for that? Because they said that they were gonna pay for the move no matter where they went.
You have just a few seconds.
So, this is the issue that I have, and I'm asking, please, pull the grant, the money that you're getting, hold on to it, and make them revamp what they're doing. That's what I'm asking. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clark, our next speaker, please.
We do have an additional speaker here in chambers, Eunice Johnson Shepherd. Unless I get another card, that'll be the last one in chambers.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, I'm a little out of breath. My name is Eunice Johnson Shepherd, 1350 Mayhand Drive. Good evening, and I am the Leon County Organizer for the Organization Florida Rising, and tonight I'm here in solidarity and on behalf of some of the Orange Avenue tenants. Things are not what they seem, and while some people are able to find housing and help from, with, with help of a family member or caregiver, the housing office is not doing everything they absolutely can to assist residents, and as they have laid out on their website, they have stated that they will provide boxes, moving trucks, comparable housing in decent areas of Tallahassee, and much more. Not senior housing, places like Ms. Hill mentioned on Richardson Street, which was built in 1953, places on 54, um, 5543 Palm Street, built in 1965, where the house next to it has metal bars on the windows, and 1507 Mike Street, built in 1948. Pointing some of those places out that are, pointing some of those places out that are provided on a list from the Housing Authority to say, they're not comparable. If the Orange Avenue Apartments were built in 1972, how are these units built as far back as 1940s comparable? We were organizing to meet with the tenants on October 3rd, a weekend, but due to the weather, they didn't show. However, some people from the Housing Authority did because they heard we were gonna be there. We spoke with them for nearly two hours, came up with plans to be more proactive with helping residents to get the information they need, since the Housing Authority has meetings during the week, during work hours, but according to them, have less than 10 people showing up to receive the information. We gave them our email, contact number, just to hear, not, just not to hear anything back, and yes, I did follow up and had to leave a voicemail. Still, no further contact, so I'm only, I can only imagine the frustration of being a resident reaching out. People have families, kids are still in school, and COVID is still present in our city, and things aren't getting better in our state. The housing market is not fair and barely available or affordable. The eviction moratorium has expired, and this is just an added layer of stress to over 100 families, not just individuals, at the Orange Avenue Apartments. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clark, our next speaker.
Next is Taylor Bureau, if that connection was, um, was made, and the next would be Jeff Blair.
Can y'all hear me?
We can. Your name and address for the record, please.
Nice, alright. Awesome. My name is Taylor Bureau, 1525 Decron Drive. Um, so I'm also speaking about Chief Revel attending the Billy Graham Conference. Um, as a lot of you know, I sit on Capital T's Board, which is Tallahassee's LGBTQ organization. I also host the LGBTQ Resource Meeting that links all of the resources for LGBTQ services in town, um, and I am honored and a privilege to be on the Citizens Police Review Board appointed by you all, thank you, and the mayor's LGBTQ Task Force. And with that in mind, I've had a lot of people reach out to me about Chief Revel attending this conference, and they are upset, afraid, and scared of, of this being our leader. And so, you know, this is, this feels like a huge red flag for us, and when people tell you who they are, we need to believe them. And I'm asking you all to listen to that speech that he made, to take the time to listen to it, and then to put this on the agenda for your next commission meeting to talk about, is this the leader that we need to have in our, um, police? So, I just wanted to say that and say that there needs to be added time. Lean on the experts in your community. We're lucky to have Equality Florida, which the whole state looks to, right here, you know, in our town. So, we have the leaders, and I, I ask you all to take the time to listen and reach out to people for next steps. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clark, our next speaker, please.
Jeff Blair.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, I'm Jeff Blair, 1803 Old Fort Drive in Tallahassee, Florida. Florida Statute Section 286-0114 requires that a board adopt rules or policies which govern the opportunity to be heard, and subsection 2 requires that members of the public shall be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard on a proposition before a board or commission. Once again, and for probably at least a fifth time, I urge you to direct staff to codify in your rules of procedure, three citizen comment options for citizen input at your commission meetings. One is in-person at the meeting, which is currently available. Two is virtually via an online platform such as this during meetings, which is currently allowed, but it's not formally in your rules of procedure. And the third is written via online submission at the talgov.com website. This was previously allowed, it's no longer currently available, but it would certainly allow an opportunity for citizens who can't attend either virtually or in-person, they're working or whatever other reasons, and would really like to comment on something and have it on the record in your agenda packets before the meeting. I've made this comment numerous times to both the city and county commission, as well as to Blueprint, but apparently I've not gotten any traction on it. I, I will be, I am working with the Alliance Tallahassee Neighborhoods, and will be putting together a comprehensive proposal, but I'd like, I'd be happy to draft some proposed language on this simple fix for your rules of procedure for you to consider. And I'd like for you to put this on as an agenda item, simply providing three opportunities for citizens to comment during your meetings, as I said, in-person, virtually, and then to provide written comment, uh, on the website that would be to provide written comment on the website that would be compiled and given to, to you before the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, our next speaker.
That was the last speaker we have for this evening, Mayor.
All right. Do we have any other individuals that are here that wish to speak? All right, seeing none, we're going to move on to City Commission Information and Sharing of Ideas. Commissioner Porter, shall we start with you and work our way down?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure if, okay, I see Tiffany and Eunice in the, in the back. I appreciate you speaking and letting us know what's going on with the Orange Avenue Apartments. I know that I've been out there a couple of times and spoken to residents, and one thing I can say for sure is there is a lot of confusion and a lot of anxiety, and that is really concerning. I know that there's a lot of work that's going on and a lot of work that needs to be done, but I would like to follow up with you after and, and see how I can help, how we can help. I did have a question, or just something that was brought to my attention. You know, it is about to get colder, and I was wondering if we could have, it could just be an email or, or something, I mean, just if we have some sort of a, I know that we have plans, had plans in the past for cold night shelters, but kind of what that process looks like, if we have begun that process, to get ahead of that moving forward since it, you know, the temperature is going to drop soon. I think I would feel a lot better if I felt like we had, if I, if I were equipped with the information that, you know, what staff is working on. So, that is something I just wanted to, to raise. You know, a lot has happened in the past couple of weeks. I, I did listen to, to the remarks made by Chief Revel. I consider myself a person of faith, but that was deeply concerning to me. I've had people reach out, and I, I don't know what that is going to look like. Those discussions, I have not spoken to the chief myself, but I do think that's something that we, we do need to have a, a serious discussion about. And that being said, you know, I know that everyone's hearts are, I mean, deeply troubled. I can all speak for myself about the shootings and the crime situation, and it really, really feels like, you know, it's every weekend, it's every week. I, I called the chief, but, you know, before all this, and I said, you know, what can we do? And, you know, he was real, I mean, this is a community issue. I agree with the people who spoke here that we all need to step up. There's a lot that we need to do, and I do believe that we are, we are taking steps. But I do want to just say that I hear you. I am concerned. I think we all are, and I do commit myself to, to working together and finding a lot of creative solutions because it's going to take all of us to do that. I'm not sure if others will speak on this. I know at our last meeting, we were having a, a discussion about, about ethics and, and what, how we need to move forward, how I believe we should move forward. What I meant to, what I was hoping to discuss and throw out as an idea is whether we might be interested in having something like an information-only workshop on ethics. I mean, we have gotten emails and recommendations by the Ethics Board that we have not really discussed, as far as I know, as a body or before the public. I think at the minimum, that is something that I would like to see, the Ethics Board presenting, have, and just have some discussion and public input, and it can just be a discussion and an information only. We don't need to take action at that meeting, but I think that that is something that I would like to throw out there as an idea. I'm, I'm not making a motion right now, but that is something that I think would be a step towards building, rebuilding trust and having an open platform to discuss some of the concerns and ideas and best practices that are out there. I also just wanted to comment, I want to thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for, for your apology and, and say that I, that I do accept, and I really appreciated our conversation, and I mean that. And I do want to take this opportunity to speak to the public and say that, you know, when we do fall short up here, it is not just about us, it hurts, it hurts the public because it is the public who ultimately suffer, whether there is, you know, with whatever we do up here, it is for the public. You know, I was elected here by the same community and the same voters that everyone else up here was, and as a young woman who nearly everyone in our city's political establishment class dismissed and did not accord much respect, it has not been easy. Throughout that process, though, I believe that I've earned the right to speak here as an equal to my colleagues, but not only that, but so did the public who elected me. And that is really what I believe is at stake when, when we do not have, when we do not live up to our own ideals about what public input and discussion should be like. And I say this to all of us, you know, this work in, in politics, and I mean, it is, it can be extremely toxic, I think we all know this. I signed up for this, I under no illusions that this environment is going to change anytime soon. There's been a lot of discussion about breaches of decorum, citizens being out of turn, people swearing or whatever, you know, and I, that doesn't really capture, I think, what is the real civility problem in our, in our country and in our local government. I think, you know, focusing on the mutual respect, listening to each other, listening to the will of the people. I, I do believe we are committed to that, and I, I personally want to say that I, I promise that I am thinking about how I can be more accountable to the people, how I can be a better representative, how I can set the right tone to be constructive. And I believe that we all want that and, and can work towards that goal together. And then finally, I just wanted to say that I really appreciate the relationships that I have built with my colleagues. There are people in this room and the county who I probably disagree with on most issues of consequence, but we have mutually respectful relationships, and, and I think that is, when we do that, that is the best of local government and the best of working together. I do want to make a motion to see if we would consider, I mean, bringing back, you know, a lot of people are surprised to hear that we haven't even formally adopted Robert's Rules of Order. And I know that formally adopting Robert's Rules of Order will not fix every problem we have, but I do believe it is something that provides a consistent and predictable way for both the public and elected officials to approach their government and each other. So, I would like to make a motion, if we could have an item brought back, perhaps with information about our parliamentary procedure, how we've typically gone about these things, and with an option of what it would look like for us to formally adopt Robert's Rules of Order.
So, let me make sure I understand the motion on the table. It's an informational item that also has potential action, as an option to formally adopt Robert's Rules of Order?
Yes.
I will second that motion myself.
Thank you.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Porter, and I am sure that the city attorney will be bringing that back to us. Well, technically, you serve as parliamentarian, don't you?
I certainly will bring the, the, the item back.
Okay.
I will bring the item back.
Excellent. Sounds, sounds great. Discussion, Commissioner Williams Cox.
I guess, I guess my question is, um, I'm very familiar with Robert's Rules of Order because I've had to lead meetings for a number of years, and, um, to my knowledge, we're following Robert's Rules. A motion, we have a presider, you have to be recognized to speak, a motion is made, it has to be seconded, and a vote is taken, and then it's announced. I'm trying to understand what, what are we missing?
Madam Attorney.
I, I do agree that we substantially follow Robert's Rules. There are many technical rules that perhaps we don't follow to the letter, but the substance of Robert's Rules are followed. We certainly can bring back an item, but what you find when, when bodies adopt Robert's Rules formally, I mean, there are, there are so many technical permutations of various motions that you get so caught up in the procedure, you sometimes don't get to the substance. What Robert's Rules is about is making sure that everybody in an orderly fashion gets to have their say. I think currently with the way we structure this, this, um, this body and the adoption, we don't, actually, as I've always said, we don't, we haven't adopted Robert's Rules, but we generally follow Robert's Rules. Now, there are times when these technical, the technical way we do it is not quite how Robert's Rules has it, but I think we follow the spirit, we'll say, of Robert's Rules because, as I said, the, what Robert's Rules is about is making sure that every person in the body gets an opportunity to speak and share their thoughts, and then that action is taken on the, on the motion and that is seconded by the body. You know, you can get caught up in the technicalities, and, you know, it, I would say probably, if we really officially adopt Robert's Rules, we probably need to have a parliamentarian also because, I mean, an official parliamentarian, because it, there are a lot of technicalities, and focusing on those technicalities would be distracting to me as the city attorney because I need to be focusing on legal matters that come before the body.
But, real quick also, talk about my role as the chair of the meeting or the chair of the CRA, how we practice now versus the role of a formally adopted Robert's Rules and how we move about the structure.
Well, generally, the, you know, the presider is in control of the meeting, so the presider acknowledges, recognizes those who will speak and, and has a certain amount of control over how matters progress during the meeting. So, there is an option, certainly, of a presider not to acknowledge someone if it gets to, if it's about getting the meeting done. So, as I said again, there is, there, there are really a lot of technical aspects to Robert's Rules that have to be considered.
Commissioner Williams Cox and Commissioner Richardson.
One other thing, too, is that it's been my experience that even if you formally adopt Robert's Rule, it is a catch-all because you have on top of it priorities such as your policies and procedures, and only would you go to Robert's Rule if, if your policies and procedures are quiet on an issue. So, it's not like you go straight to Robert's Rule, you go to what you already have in place as priority, and Robert's Rule is like the last recourse if it's not addressed in other places. Is that everybody's understanding as well?
If, certainly, if the body has adopted a formal policy, you're going to apply the formal policy.
I'm not opposed to it, I just want us to understand what we're doing because I have been places where Robert's Rule is weaponized, and I don't want us to, I don't think we'll get there, but, you know, I see it in some of our joint meetings sometimes, you know, where we, you know, we get a little bit further out there than we do here. If you, if you all know what I'm talking about, you know, it gets heated sometimes and you get called on the different, the technicalities, and I just don't want us to use it as a weapon, but I'm, I'm happy with us doing that, but as Madam Attorney has just said, our parliament, being a parliamentarian is a very serious business. There, there are certifications to be a parliamentarian, to be, and there's a license for it as well. So, I, if we're going to do that, and if we think that we're going to need a, a parliamentarian, and that's something that would need to be allowed for in this adoption, because right now, if I have a question, I just look and ask, ask the question of the, of the city attorney because not only am I trying to make sure I got it straight parliamentary-wise, I'm trying to make sure we stay out of trouble because the difference between thee and the could be millions of dollars. So, I just want us to think about that when we're, when we're doing it. Thank you.
Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, um, would have the same question as Commissioner Williams Cox has asked. I, I think we are certainly abiding by the spirit of Robert's Rules of Order, Commissioner Porter. You know, if there was one instance where we didn't, I'm, I'm not sure that that requires us to take that kind of formal action. I have served on three different governmental bodies, as a school board member for six years, as a member of the Florida House of Representatives for eight years, and six years on this city commission. And in every instance, there has just been an agreement that we would abide by the spirit of Robert's Rules of Order, but there was never any formal action taken to adopt. And I think for many of the same reasons that I can't imagine the legislature, I mean, we would get so bogged down in technicalities, and there are people that would use those technicalities just to squash an issue. And I, I, I have not witnessed instances where members of this dais have not had the opportunity to speak, to have input, to make motions, and so I personally would be opposed, with all due respect, Commissioner Porter, and based on my experience with us formally adopting Robert's Rules of Order. I, I just have not seen any instance where I feel that that type of action is necessary.
Commissioner Porter is at on point. I got Commissioner Matlow in queue to speak.
Um, go ahead, Commissioner.
Commissioner Matlow, then Commissioner Porter.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and yeah, through the various boards we serve on, some have officially adopted Robert's Rules, some have not. Largely, on both sides, we haven't experienced very many issues, but to Commissioner Richardson's point, we did have an issue on this board where a commissioner was not allowed to speak at the end of a meeting, and I personally wanted to apologize to Commissioner Porter because I feel like, in retrospect, we shouldn't have allowed the meeting to adjourn. We should have sat here and allowed her to speak, whether the meeting was called, adjourned or not. And I think there are policies in Robert's Rules of Order that address these specific things, like a, a chair would not adjourn a meeting without calling for any further business, and if it's against the will of the majority, the majority could still speak up and, and overrule that, that ruling. So, in the spirit of collegiality and the spirit of civility, I think what, what's looking for is, what are the set of rules we're following, and are we going to be consistent with them in, in every decision? I think Robert's Rules provides that framework, and, and I do appreciate the mayor's apology, but, you know, I've, it's been three years since I've been serving up here on different boards, and I, I had never seen that happen. I've never experienced it where a commissioner did not have an opportunity to speak unless there was a motion to adjourn the meeting and the majority of the board was done with discussion for that day. So, for, for that reason, I support the motion because I don't think, I mean, I think it's, it's routine, and I think it's accepted at different boards we already serve on, and let's just have that consistency and abide by it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I will withdraw my second. I'll put you down as the second mayor pro temp.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, the, the questions, I, I respect the questions and the, the concerns. That's precisely, frankly, why I wanted to bring this issue up, is so that we could have public input, because I have been reached out to even before, even, you know, months ago about, about Robert's Rules of Order. I, I do think that it is a best practice, and I am curious to see if, if it is something that the public supports and that we do, we can continue this discussion now, but I'm, you know, I, my understanding too, and, and I don't really want to get into a back and forth now, is that what Robert's Rules of Order allows is for each board to make their own adjustments to the Robert's Rules of Order to better suit their needs. It's, we use it, I believe, do we use it for the CRA?
Yes.
We use it for Blueprint. We, you know, I don't envision, I don't disagree that we don't, I agree that we follow the spirit, and I don't really think that that much would change, but I do think that I would personally feel more comfortable formally adopting it and knowing, you know, knowing that and the public as well, but I'm, I'm interested to hear from the public, which is why I made the motion, and we can decide if, if it is supported tonight, if we ultimately want to make that leap or not. Thank you.
Excellent. Any further comment?
I would, I would just-
Commissioner Williams Cox.
I would just add that, again, I don't have a problem with the motion. I'm just talking about, we got a- I'm just talking about, we got to think it all the way down. We're going to need a parliamentarian. The city attorney has told us that. So what are we planning to do about that? You know, I'm good with it. We can formally adopt it. But when there's time for a ruling or what have you, and besides that, as a presider, the presider can still not let you speak because you have to be recognized. If you watch the Florida Legislature, you know, action. The speaker does not always, the president of the senate or speaker of the house, they don't always let people speak. They have to be recognized to speak. And I'm not, you know, I'm just saying, that doesn't guarantee that. It does not guarantee that. And you'll find that in Robert's Rules. Commissioner Matlow, you said that there's some provision in there to not allow this to happen or that. But once the meeting, you don't even have to have a motion to adjourn. You can just adjourn according to Robert's Rule. But I'm just adding, just adding my, you know, experience from using it in other places. Maybe this is a different place. But the city attorney has already said, if we're going to do this, we're going to need somebody to be designated as the parliamentarian. So if we're going, if we move forward with this, just know that we need a parliamentarian.
Any other comment? All right, the motion's been made by Commissioner Porter, signed by Commissioner Matlow. All those in favor of the motion on table, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Passes four to one with Commissioner Richardson in dissent. Commissioner Porter, you have the floor.
Thank you, that's all for me.
All right, Commissioner Williams-Cox.
I think we need to go on and deal with the parliamentarian piece. We can't leave this in the air.
Oh, no, it's coming back to us as an agenda item.
Okay, but even as an agenda item, he needs to know the will of this body in regards to how to deal with the parliamentarian. We don't need to send her off to look at a-
Was that, was that your-
I can just put options-
Sure.
-in the agenda item.
Are we comfortable with that?
If she's comfortable, I'm comfortable.
Are you comfortable, Madam Attorney?
When I need something, I'm going to look at, I'm going to look down there.
Sure. Sure.
Okay, thank you. I want, I just want to piggyback on what Mr. Sims has already said about breast cancer and Awareness Month. I'm wearing pink. And for many of you who know that my right hand here in the office and my BFF is a breast cancer survivor, but she's also a cancer survivor. And she has a program every year to honor cancer survivors. And this year, she is doing one, that's Dr. Tawanda Diavola-Davis. She is doing a virtual cancer symposium tomorrow night at 7:00 p.m. Please go to, her foundation is called Cancer Knockout Foundation. You can go there to get the Zoom link to join. And she has a doctor who will be speaking. She has the chair of the Broward County School Board. You've probably heard her name a time or two dealing with masks. Teresa Wells, who's a local person. Dr. Judy Mandrell, also a local person. And, you know, and this next individual is someone that I want, I would hope we would pay attention to. Breast cancer is not just for women. Men do have breast cancer. So she has a young man who will share his story about his battle with, he can't call it breast cancer. He calls it chest cancer because he said men don't have breasts. Well, he's going to share his story. He's in law enforcement and he will share what he went through. And so I think it's very important for us to remember that cancer, you know, is irrespective of person. And so I encourage you to join that. And if not, if you're not able to do that one, just continue to recognize and support those who survive and those who are fighting. And for those who may have lost their battle and for those family members who are caregivers. And I know Commissioner Richardson has a firsthand knowledge of that. I do, too, because I've served as a caregiver for some folks, including a family member and including Dr. Davis. So I just want to encourage you to support and participate and be aware. This is also domestic violence. So today I'm wearing pink, next commission may not be wearing purple because that's the color for that. And I'm going to encourage you, if you see something, say something, do something, you know, talk to people. Because there are folks out there who are suffering and they're suffering in silence. It's time to break the silence and it's time to deal with these people who are causing harm. So those are the items that I bring to you tonight. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the next time I come to a meeting, I'm going to wear an aluminum cap on my head because I swear that Commissioner Williams-Cox is stealing my thoughts. No, but seriously, that was one of the issues I was going to bring up, the Breast Cancer Awareness Month. As Commissioner Williams-Cox mentioned, I have had firsthand experience, not personally, but just over five years ago, my wife was diagnosed with breast cancer. She had a lump in one breast and it kept growing and growing. And so when she went to the doctor and had it biopsied, it turned out that it was cancerous. And that started our five-year journey through that process. It was like a gut punch for our family because my wife, up to that point, had been perfectly healthy and hadn't even had so much as a cold. And so initially, she was very private about it. But eventually was talked into a television interview by Abby Walton from Channel 6. And since that time, she and I both have been public advocates for mammograms early. Mammograms, we've told both of our daughters that, you know, don't wait till 25 or 30. Because you now know that we have a history of that in our family, you may have to start that process even earlier. And so we are both champions of that and supporting the American Cancer Society, which raises money for research and to provide services for those who are battling cancer, particularly in this case, breast cancer. I had a, my oldest brother, who has just turned 79 years old, was recently diagnosed with breast cancer. And he's dealing with that now. And so this really has hit home for me in at least those two instances. I just wanted to announce, too, that the Making Strides of Leon County will be held on this coming Sunday at 2:00 p.m., Cascades Park. That is one of the major fundraisers of our local American Cancer Society. So if you're able to participate, come out and participate, they will be observing COVID restrictions. Or you can go online to their website and donate if you'd like. But we certainly, cancer is one of the greatest causes of death, period, but particularly among women, breast cancer. And so we need the research. We need the specialization in terms of treatment and care. Because that treatment, either the radiation or the chemo, is something that none of you would want to. I mean, I personally haven't experienced it, of course. But I have witnessed what my wife went through when she was going through that process. And so if we can provide the funding that's necessary for the research, treatment, and cure, then certainly that would be a noble thing to do. That's all I had, Mr. Mayor. And so that's why I'm wearing pink today. Previously, I served as one of the real men who wear pink. And so I'm proud to wear my pink in support of the American Cancer Society and its mission. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two items to address. First, I agree with Commissioner Porter on hosting a workshop on ethics reform. I think we need to look at the proposals on lobbying proposed by the Independent Ethics Board. I think we need to look at whistleblower expansion to the Independent Ethics Board. And then in conversations with the inspector general, it may need to be segmented into just complaints based dealing with commissioners or his office in general. So there's not two different paths for these complaints. I think we do need to look at a lifetime ban on lobbying in city contracts for people convicted of honest services fraud. And I think we need to look at disqualifying vendors that pay bribes or use unregistered lobbyists as a check on the individual companies to provide another backstop for anybody looking for wrongdoing. My only question would be, you mentioned a informational-only workshop. I agree, I don't think we need to lay out what, everything that needs to be discussed there and have action items to take. But I think at the end of that type of workshop, we should take action on what comes back for formally adopting.
Oh, sure, yeah. No, that's, yeah.
Okay, so I would make a motion that we schedule a workshop this year to look at ethics reform proposals, to not have them prepared, but have them presented. And then a space to decide collectively what we want to bring back and see to adopt.
There is a motion on the table made by Commissioner Matlow to have a workshop on ethics reform. I will second that motion. Is there any further comment?
Just a question.
Sure, Commissioner Richardson.
So doesn't that mean that we are treading on the grounds of our Independent Ethics Board? I mean, that's what the citizens, over 60% of the citizens of this city voted for, was an independent ethics board, to make those recommendations. And they have done their job. I know they have some recommendations on whistleblower status and lobbying. They have not been agended for us yet. But I think that, to me, is the appropriate venue, is the Independent Ethics Board to take up these issues and bring recommendations for the commission.
Is that rhetorical, are you looking for?
If I may.
Commissioner Porter on point.
Thank you. What I envisioned was that they, you know, a space where they discuss the recommendations that they've made. So not to usurp, I mean, they don't have the authority to make the policy, as you know. And so a place where we can focus on the recommendations that they've made and have public discussion. So I see it as being consistent with what you're describing and consistent with the mission of the Ethics Board, to have this discussion, certainly with them.
Commissioner Richardson, any follow-up?
Well, I, like I said, I'm just at a loss to really hear a cogent explanation why we would usurp the authority of our Independent Ethics Board or maybe at least have a discussion with them as to how they would like to proceed. Because that, these are issues that have been assigned to them as an independent ethics board. And I'm not quite sure why it is we would enter into a workshop or discussion with them. We don't attend their meetings. We don't give input at their meetings. I see these as issues clearly for this Independent Ethics Board to take on and discuss and then to bring recommendations back to the commission.
Commissioner Matlow.
Yeah, I understand where you're coming from. But I think the Independent Ethics Board was created to be a tool to make recommendations that they see. As far as I know, I don't think we've given the authority of setting city commission policy to the Independent Ethics Board. I think we've retained that authority. The same way we're able to reject recommendations the Independent Ethics Board makes, we're also able to suggest new recommendations. You know, personally, I don't recommend rejecting the recommendations. I think they're good recommendations. But I think this would just be the city commission reviewing them and ideas from this body and looking at what we can do to move into the new year with new set policies to address some of the things that we've seen play out over the past two years.
Commissioner Williams-Cox.
Yeah, it sounds like I'm hearing two different things. Maybe it's me, so let me get some clarification. We're talking about looking at setting some type of city policy to deal with ethics of folks who are no longer here. Or, but we also want the Independent Ethics Board to make some, we want to deal with the recommendations that they have made. Now, I guess where I'm, the confusion is is that which comes first is card or the horse? Because I don't want to get into, the Ethics, the Independent Ethics Board gave us a list of ethics proposals or that they were recommendations. And we accepted those and created an ordinance. I'm looking at Madam Attorney, is that, that was the way we did it, right?
So, back in 2019, you had some recommendations that came from the Independent Ethics Board. We reviewed those, we gave you recommendations related to them. But substantially, you adopted the recommendations of the Independent Ethics Board. That was in 2019. And that was the comprehensive revisit and establishment of the ethics ordinance and the requirements related there, too.
So, to me, that kind of set the order. It comes from the other body that was in our charter, from the Ethics Board, passed down to us to consider, which we have some recommendations that they made to consider. We will discuss and decide whether to accept or not. And then they become a part of our policy, right?
It can be adopted as an ordinance if you approve them moving forward.
Okay, so where my confusion is, is if that is the order, then are we proposing that it goes a different way? Where we're sending it to them, saying, hey, add these to your recommendations for us? Or, help me.
May I?
Yeah.
Let me jump in real quick with my ideas and I'll come back to you, to the maker of the motion. I actually think that this is a good idea and it's a great opportunity, I'll tell you why. When we, when we had it approved by the citizens to create an ethics officer and an ethics board, one of the main responsibilities of the ethics officer was to provide us, the electeds in senior management, with annual ethics training of our local ethics ordinance. Now, we do the state training, okay? But I was a little confused earlier this year when we got the email from the ethics officer saying that there would be no local training. We passed the most comprehensive ethics ordinance in 198-year history of the city. I think this is a great opportunity to have the ethics officer come in, give us a refresher training on what we have passed. But at the same time, if there's some other ideas to be considered, well, it's publicly noticed and we're there and we have the opportunity to do so as well. So I'm not opposed to having a workshop this year. If anything, it helps the ethics officer by pulling us all together in one room, which he did not think he would be able to do. Hence the email that he sent out earlier. Allows us to get a refresher course and really dig in and talk about not only the current ethics ordinance. Look, we might get to the end of the day or the end of the workshop and say, wow, that was a great comprehensive review of our ethics ordinance. We're good to go. There might be one or two great ideas that we want to consider that might come back for ratification at another meeting. My point is, I don't have a problem dedicating a morning reviewing our current ethics ordinance and possibly considering another great idea or something that might come up.
Well, I guess I'm still confused because I'm hearing, I'm hearing a workshop, but I'm also hearing some new potential ethics recommendations coming from here, coming from this body. So, you know, the workshop, yeah. The only, I think the only reason we didn't pull together this time, this year, was because we couldn't get schedules. He attempted to get schedules and we couldn't get schedules.
Right.
So they did, you know, because we had just done this in 2019 and then COVID, of course. So he couldn't get us all together. That was the reason. At least, that was my understanding. So I think it is the intent to do that, to do that, to have the workshop. I don't oppose the workshop. I'm just hearing all this new stuff. And if we want to do new stuff, that's fine. But let's keep the apples and the apples and oranges with the oranges. And then I can better make a decision on which way we're going. That's, I'm just confused. We're talking about a workshop, fine. We're talking about providing new recommendations. And where do they go? Do they go to them? Or we create a new policy, but it's in the ethics arena? Do they go to them, or we create a new policy, but it's in the ethics arena? It's, help me, help me, help me.
Sure. I had Commissioner Matlow first, and then Commissioner Porter.
Sure, and just on point, Commissioner Williams-Cox, I understand what you're saying. The workshop would be an opportunity for discussion. I was just laying out things that I would like to see discussed, and you know, we'll discuss those either at the workshop or in another meeting, but I don't, I, I'm not proposing we make recommendations and send them back to the ethics board, and they send them back, we are taking those. Yeah, I'm not trying to make a whole new process, I'm just saying, I want to explore those. There's other things that I'd like to bring up to the body in the future, and I was just trying to let people know where my head's at and what I'm looking at.
Yeah.
All right, Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And if I may add to that, the ethics board itself has made at least three recommendations to us, as, you know, that we have not heard, so I cannot speak for them, but my, one thing I was thinking is this would just be an opportunity for them as well to present the recommendations they've already made that they have, that we have not yet heard, so coming from them, not directing them necessarily, that's all.
Okay. Okay. Okay, any other comment on the motion on the table? Commissioner Richardson?
I still don't hear a clear explanation of why it is we, as a commission, I don't know that we need a workshop on ethics. Certainly the training, and that was the reason, my understanding is why we, he couldn't coordinate all of our schedules to have the training, so he suggested that we do the state training, which I think all of us did, of course, to meet the requirement. But if we're going to venture into ethics and ethics reform, then why do we have an ethics, an independent ethics board? That's what I'm suggesting. I, I mean, I don't know that we need a workshop on ethics, or to update us on our ethics ordinance. I think what we certainly need to do is consider those recommendations that our independent ethics board has brought before us that have not been agended. I know I've seen some suggestions that they had concerning whistleblower, concerning lobbying, and that being housed with the independent ethics board, but for us to have a workshop on the issues that are the topic for the independent ethics board, I think we're then, and Madam Attorney, correct me if I'm wrong, treading on their territory.
Madam Attorney?
Thank you. Well, certainly, and the voters have spoken, and they've said that is the body that, that they would like it to be independent of the city of Tallahassee in terms of their review, but certainly there is nothing to prevent you, as a body, from coming up with your own suggestions or ordinances related to ethics. I mean, you are a, you approve the recommendations of the ethics board, so you could, I think it's really just kind of a philosophy of how you want things done. If you want to utilize the ethics board as the sole way that ethics provisions come to you for review, you can do that, or you can use a combination. You know, you can have them make recommendations, but you could also have recommendations that are presented to this body for your approval as well.
Okay, so, real quick, Commissioner Richardson, you, are you, are you suggesting a substitute motion to bring the ethics board's recommendations that they sent to us formally, put it formally on the next commission meeting for consideration? Help me out here.
Yeah, I guess the question that I have is, why haven't those things been agended for us to consider? I know they've been transmitted to us, but they have not been brought before this body for consideration. I think all things ethics should stay with an independent ethics board. I think that's what the community voted for and what they expect, but now if we're going to start to get back into the realm of developing our own ethics, then I think we need to have community input on that, and not take it upon ourselves to venture into what this community has given the independent ethics board the, I guess, authority to do. And those are simply recommendations to the city commission, but if we want to get back into the business of creating ethics for ourselves, then I think that then becomes confusing to the general public as to why was it that they voted overwhelmingly to establish an independent ethics board? If we have some concerns, there's, there would have to be a way, it's, it almost reminds me of our CRA Citizen Advisory Committee. You know, when, when issues come to the CRA, they're vetted by the CAC, and the CAC makes recommendations to the CRA board. I see this, I see it as the same way with our ethics board, but even more so, because again, that's something that was created in the charter by over 60% of the voters of this community, that that be an independent ethics board, that I think all of us expected, at least I did when I voted on that, that all things ethics would come through them, be vetted, and then recommendations made to this city commission. That was always my understanding, and I'm sure there would be others out there who might would agree with that as well.
Commissioner Richardson, that's a voice of reason. I have the city manager, you asked the question that you're going to respond to, Commissioner Richardson, and then I have Commissioner Porter.
Yes, sir, and it may not be exactly on point, and this, I hope this may help, but I will tell you, as part of the process and the creation of the ethics board, each year they develop an annual report. We're at that time of the year.
Okay.
I think that could be on your agenda as early as the next meeting.
Excellent.
Which would provide an opportunity, would come at the top of your meeting, the appearance of other committees or boards. That may provide, just offering this as a suggestion, because this is a natural time of the year that that occurs, that would allow you to have a discussion with the ethics officer, and kind of put the pieces together in terms of how your decisions, policy considerations, ordinance considerations fit with their actions as well. I just share that, just because you happen to be at this time of the year.
Commissioner Richardson, and I'm coming, Commissioner Porter.
Yeah.
Commissioner Richardson, what you're suggesting, which...
And I like the idea that the city manager brought forward, because I think that if he's giving us a report, and there are issues that we would like to see them take up and vet, then that would be an opportunity for us to pass those along to the independent ethics board, if it's in addition to what they've already recommended that we haven't taken up yet.
So, in that scenario, Dr. Jackson, what I think is being suggested is that the ethics board would take the first crack at vetting some type of, whether it's a lifelong ban or a five-year, a 10-year, as you mentioned, for those that committed both honest services fraud and financial crimes, doing business with the city, and then after the ethics board has the opportunity to do their professional review, that would be a recommendation that would come before the city commission.
If they chose to make it a recommendation, and I would, that is what I would make as a substitute motion.
There is a substitute motion on the table to formally send the recommendations that would, I guess, Commissioner Matlow, that would be your recommendations as well that you brought forward, you want to send them to the ethics board for consideration and come back. Well, first of all, is there, so do I capture the motion, Commissioner Richardson, that the ethics board would vet it first and then send recommendations on to us?
Well, it would come during the time that we would have that discussion with the ethics officer at the time that he is doing his annual report.
Okay. Is there a second to the motion on the table?
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay, seconded by Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox. First of all, I have to go to Commissioner Porter for comment, you were next in line, and then Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Attorney, does this, the independent ethics board have unilateral authority to create ethics policy for the city?
Well, as I said previously, of course, the city has its own home rule power, and it can adopt ethics ordinances. I think what, what we're seeing is, as I said, I think it's a matter of philosophy. Do you want the independent ethics board to give you some input and recommendations on these things, or would you prefer to move forward? I mean, it's just a philosophy of each one of you individually as to how you want to approach these things.
Commissioner Porter?
Do you know, either Mr. City Manager or Madam Attorney, how many months it has been since we have gotten the first ethics recommendation of this year that we have not heard?
Are you referring to the ethics board's recommendations?
Yeah.
No, I don't, I do not, because I don't know the date on that, but I know usually what occurs, my recollection, is that in years past, since the beginning of the ethics board, what would occur is the city commissioner would perhaps during the sharing of ideas, raise what, you know, when would that item be brought forward, and a date would be set. So, I can tell you for myself in my office, since we often go through and, you know, try to give you recommendations as to best practices, we wait for that signal before we begin, although we have already begun, of course. We start researching and make sure that we do a proper vetting of other municipalities and how they handle matters, so that you can have the, all the information available at your disposal as you make a decision.
And does the ethics commission, independent ethics commission board have the independent ability to put something on our agenda?
I think what usually happens, and what I have told the ethics officers, simply to contact the city manager and be placed on the agenda.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to let the discussion continue. I, I'm a little confused, too, because I feel like what I'm saying is consistent with your concerns, Commissioner Richardson. I feel like this is that opportunity for them to present to us. I really don't want to speak for them, but I feel like in my conversations with our ethics officer, they would want this opportunity, and I believe from what I'm hearing from the public, that they want the devoted time outside of just a city commission meeting to have these discussions, so, you know, I will leave it up to the maker of the motion to sort of, and this discussion to play out, but there's probably, I will not be comfortable with anything short of, you know, a workshop at some point that is dedicated to ethics and the board's recommendations.
Thank you, Commissioner Porter. Real quick, Commissioner Richardson, I do like your motion. I will support the substitute motion. If it fails, I'll support the original motion on the table. But I had forgotten that the ethics officer is going to be giving us a report, and I do think that the ethics board should have an opportunity to take on new ideas that are submitted. Of course, we will all be, I'm sure, doing our own research on that as well. Commissioner Matlow, you were next in line.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I'm more confused, I think, on the direction we're going now, because now it sounds like it's an independent ethics board. It's not up for us to tell them what to take up at all. We don't have any authority to tell them to consider an item, we don't have any authority to tell them what to review. They're meant to act independently, and we're meant to act independently as well. And then my other concern with all things ethics, I know, you know, I think it was this year, maybe last year, the ethics board sent over a policy recommendation, but they're not, it's not their purview to recommend policy changes, is that correct?
That's correct, and I actually sent them an opinion in that regard.
So, I mean, there are ideas coming out of the ethics board where they don't have authority that would need to come from a city commission conversation, unless we want to look at how we're going to expand the authority of the ethics board to make policy suggestions, you know, handle lobbyist registrations and all these other things, and if we're talking about expanding the powers of the ethics board and putting it all on their plate, let's bring that back and talk about it and see if that's what we want to adopt. I'm just confused about, bring back their recommendations if that's at the next meeting. I support that coming back, but I don't think that precludes the need for a workshop either. Mr. Mayor, and if you'd restate the motion, I'm not sure exactly where we landed.
Sure. Would you all please restate the motion as it was made by Commissioner, the substitute motion by Commissioner Richardson?
The substitute motion, Mr. Mayor, would be that during the time that the ethics officer makes his report, his annual report to the city commission, that at that point we have discussion with him, those issues that we would like to see the ethics commission take up, vet, and make recommendations to us. Now, if there are policies that we think we need to do as a commission, if that's separate from what the ethics board does, we don't have to have a workshop with them. We have that workshop ourselves on those policies that are not appropriate for the ethics board. But there are some of the things that you mentioned, Representative, Commissioner Matlow, I'm sorry, that are appropriate for the ethics board to consider and make recommendations to, they have, in some instances, with the issue about the whistleblower and the lobbyists being housed within, with the ethics board. They have made those recommendations, but Madam Attorney, if there are, if they are policies that are not within the realm of the ethics commission or ethics board, then certainly it would be appropriate for us as a commission to have a workshop on those issues. But those issues that are appropriate for the ethics board to consider and bring back recommendations, I think the report by the, at the time that the ethics officer gives us that report, that would be the opportunity for us to make those recommendations of items we would like to see them consider, vet, and make recommendations back to them.
All right, and Commissioner Williams-Cox?
I would say that I will support the motion, but I think that with Commissioner Porter's concern has still not been addressed, because if citizens are asking you about what, you know, what are the ethics policies and what have you, then there's nothing to prevent the ethics board from having public workshops to, with citizens, to explain to them what is in place, what their role is and all of that. So, I hear what you're saying, that the ethics board should have that workshop. It doesn't have to include us, but have a public workshop with the community to report to the people who put them, who put them there in the first place, because this was your citizen initiative to create the ethics board, to explain it and what it is that you do, and how does an issue get to them, and how it then turns into a recommendation possibly for the, to the commission.
Yeah, yeah.
So, is that, that's what people are asking you, I'm thinking?
Yeah, I mean, I think people want an opportunity to discuss their concerns and clarify their questions, and as far as whether the independent ethics board can do that, that is up to them. You know, I don't feel like I can give them that direction.
Right. But I'm just saying, they have, they have that option. There's nothing that prevents them from having public workshops, to my knowledge.
And we certainly can request that of them, and I can't see why they would deny it, but we can certainly request that of them, if it's what citizens are saying they would like to see happen.
Okay, any further comment?
I just...
Mr. Matlow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I support the motion on the table, and also, we'll make another motion following this.
Excellent. Substitute motion on the table has been made by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. Commissioner Matlow, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I'll make a motion that we schedule a workshop on ethics reform, and we invite the ethics officer, as the mayor said earlier, to give a presentation on, give us an update on what we're under right now, and allow an opportunity for the public to participate in the conversation.
Second that motion?
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Matlow that we host a workshop and invite the ethics officer to provide workshop on ethics reform. Excellent, and it's been seconded by Commissioner Porter. All right, let's discuss. Any comment? Commissioner Williams-Cox?
A workshop hosted by us?
Yes, a city commission workshop.
And invite the ethics officer to come and...
And give a brief presentation for us and the public on the current ethics rules, and then also give an opportunity for the public to weigh in with their opinions and have discussion amongst the body of any decisions we want to move forward on.
Okay, because what I just said was that they could host it and say... Okay, because what I just said was that they could host it themselves, so what, I'm trying to understand, why would we need to host that for them?
I think we would host it as, one, the decision-making body at the top of our local government, but also as an opportunity to engage with the public, allow the public to hear our ideas and then explore maybe some of these things that are outside of the purview of the ethics board that we may want to take up.
Any further comment? Any questions? I do not think it's a bad idea, because I think what's going to happen is that the ethics officer is going to come in and it will remind us and remind the public the power of passing the strongest ethics reform package in 198-year history, something that we can be proud of. Obviously, there'll be opportunity for public comment as well to bring other items to the table for consideration. Like I said earlier, I'm, I'm all in favor of it.
And I don't think it's a bad idea, it's just the opposite of what I just described.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm trying to relegate that back now.
I guess, Commissioner Williams Cox, I'm thinking of it more of ethics training. That's my own personal opinion. We did not have it this year. We're coordinating the schedule for Dwight. We will be in the same place at the same time and he can come.
But with all due respect, ethics training for us does not occur in the public.
Right.
Am I wrong?
No, we, we usually have it here in city hall chambers and it's like all the department heads and it, it is, it is open, correct?
It's usually open.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I haven't had ethics training with the new ethics officer, but the last ethics officer, it did not occur in the public.
No, Julie had it here.
When I say, yeah, we had it in here, but it wasn't an open forum for the community to come in and be a part of it, because it was required ethics training, and it was before we, before we.
Right.
I'm talking about not that, not that where we adopted the recommendations, the long list of recommendations, but the ethics training that I'm referring to as opposed to.
The state required.
Yeah, the state required training. But that's fine, I'm good, I'm good. We can do it, we can do it on the playground if we want to. Let's do it, let's just do it.
All right, any other further comment on the motion on the table? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. Commissioner Matlow, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, and my, the final item I want to address, and I don't know if this needs to come back to the city commission, I just want to make sure the city manager and the city attorney are aware of it. You know, we, we've heard from the public some concerning details about what appeared to be a paid speaking engagement from our police chief, which appears to be, from what I've seen, representing the city of Tallahassee and divorced from his individual capacity. So I, based on the feedback I've heard from the public, I think that's, there's just a lot of unanswered questions that, you know, I, I think need to be looked at and that's, you know, was this a paid speaking arrangement? Was it approved by the city of Tallahassee? Do we have a policy for outside speaking engagements for our top officials of the city of Tallahassee? Does TPD have a department agenda as described by the police chief in that meeting? And what are we doing as a city to send the message to the entire public that our organization respects all religions and sexual preference choices? That, I just wanted to, I, I'm not asking for an agenda item to come back, but I am asking the city manager to hear the public as they're asking questions and get those questions answered for them.
Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir, noted. I will say and I can confirm that the chief was not representing the city of Tallahassee. I listened to the recording myself, I heard no mention of that, and I can confirm that he was not. He was not on city time, he was on his personal time on his own. So I, I know those answers to that question, but, but certainly I hear you and we've heard the public. In fact, John Harris, I think you've talked directly to the chief. I would encourage that, again, as much as you think that is necessary. The chief does represent, he's a public servant, has been a public servant for nearly 30 years and served our community. And anybody that listened to the audio, he kind of gave his own testimony of his, his journey in the department, becoming a chaplain in the department. So he, he is a man of faith, we, we know that. And what I also know is he's, he's got an open door. He serves our entire community and he does it without any bias, and, and I think the very best connection is directly with him, to hear from him and who he is as a person, to create that bond and that respect. But I certainly hear the comments, Commissioner Matlow, and anybody with any concerns at all, I would encourage them to work directly with the chief to, to learn who he is and hear who he is, but he certainly was not at a conference representing the city of Tallahassee. He was there on his own.
Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, no further items today.
Well, we've had a wonderful meeting, great discussion on many different topics. I just want to close and remind everyone in the Tallahassee public that this is a very loving community and a very open community, and we don't care where you live, where you play, where you work, who you love, or where you worship. We are all one Tallahassee. Now, we will have challenges and we will have hurdles. Our feelings will get hurt and we will need to have discussions. That will never end. But I do know, and I think I speak for everyone up here at the dais, that we truly believe that we are an open community, we will wrap our arms around those that are hurt, those that are sad, those that need comfort, and together as one community, we will move forward. Appreciate everybody coming out tonight. Seeing no further business before the city commission of the city of Tallahassee, we are adjourned.